Okay, the Planning Commission meeting for May 13th, 2013 is called to order. We have a card for public comment on Agenda Item 2, which is Joseph Johnson. Come forward.
Thank you. I've kind of taken up too much of your time. Do you want me to use the microphone?
Yes, if you could sit at the table and identify yourself before you start.
Okay. My name is Joseph Johnson. I live here in Oregon City. I'd like to ask a couple of questions and see if I can't get some information about a portion of the transportation plan that's referred to as FF26. Prospect Street that we live on runs parallel to Malala, one block to the west of it, between the Grocery Outlet parking lot and a street called, that's referred to as Cam Street in the TSP. It's scheduled for curb and gutter, sidewalk, complete improvements into a family-friendly traveling route. I had some concerns about this. Very briefly, we live in a little house bungalow that shares a driveway with our neighbors, so we use the on-street parking extensively. We literally can't get more than one car each in the driveway or nobody gets in or out. There are a number of people on that street who do not have access to off-street parking. The street is extremely narrow. It has little sections of sidewalk and curb and gutter installed at various points, but probably less than 10 percent maybe is developed. The rest of it is all soft-shoulder gravel or dirt. Years and years ago, I lived in a house in southern Oregon, and the city decided to do the same thing on the street that I lived on, which at the time looked very much like Prospect did now. And after lopping off six feet of my front yard without even offering to pay for it and removing an 80-year-old tree that took away half the shade in my front yard, they were kind enough to send me a bill for two and a half years' worth of my property taxes to pay for the curb and gutter and sidewalk. So, what I wanted to do, this is part of the Phase 4 of the TSP plan, I wanted to see if I could ask you to give me an idea, even just a reasonable guess, as to when Phase 4 might take place. I wanted to see if I could find out who is actually going to pay for these improvements, because if it's going to be the residents, it might be a good idea to start setting some money aside for that now, because I'm sure it costs a whole lot more than it did back then. We're talking the late '70s, early '80s on that pastime that I went through this. And the last one is, I actually got a tape measure out and went out into the street and tried to find it as close to the center line of the street as I could, and then measured off to the existing curb and gutter lines where I could find them. And the actual right-of-way that's been kind of, sort of defined by these little sections is 42 feet, 6 inches, which is not real big. It is within the constrained limits in the city code, but there are some things in the city code, too, like mandated trees and mandated parkway strips and things like that, that if they are, if they're going to be tried to squeeze into that area, everybody in that neighborhood is just going to get the whole front of their yards cut off, and we're essentially going to be living in townhomes, not yards. So, I just wanted to get an idea if that city, you guys feel that that's something that you can work within that 42 feet, 6 inches, and still allow us to be, have some, you know, on-street parking and things like that? That's all I really wanted to try and find out.
Well, you weren't here, I'm, hi, I'm Denise McGriff. Anyway, you weren't here at a previous meeting, and one of the things that we mentioned to several of our constituents is that where you think the street is and where the right-of-way is are probably two different things. So, the right, I don't know what the right-of-way of Prospect Street is, but I'm sure it's bigger than the paved section. And the other thing is, is that most people probably don't know where their property lines are. And your property line is probably not where you think it is if you've never had your property surveyed. So, with an unimproved street, it may appear that your front yard is larger than it is, but it's probably part of the street.
Yeah, I wish I had brought a picture of it. Prospect Street is kind of an odd thing I've never seen before. Because of these little chunks of sidewalk, almost everybody up and down the street has limited their front yards to pretty much a visual straight line all the way down, lined up with the backside of the sidewalk. So, it's kind of interesting.
John's probably looking at it right now, aren't you, John?
Is it Prospect or Terrace? Is that what you said?
Prospect Street is what it is, yeah. Prospect Street. FF26 is the referral number in the TSP.
Couple of things, I'm not sure when Phase 4 is going to happen, but the intent of all the transportation system improvements are to be developer-driven. So, when you sell or improve your house, like if you put an addition on that make above so many square feet, I think it's 50 percent of, you know, you increase the size by 50 percent, then you'd be required to make sidewalk improvements to your property. But if you just stay in your house for the next 75 years, then the only way that you'd be required, you'd be, you'd have to pay for those improvements. The city might get a chunk of money and say, "We're going to fix the street and connect all those sidewalks." I don't see that happening with the current climate, but it would be then on the city's dime. It wouldn't be on yours.
Okay. Yeah. Because in the, in the plan itself, it's, it is Phase 4, which I understand is kind of way out there.
Yeah.
And it's budgeted for about $190,000.
Yeah, and that's, and that's developer money, you know, like as people fix their yards. If, and I don't know Prospect, but if like there was, across the street from you, there was a subdivision going to go in, then they would have to improve that out to the half-street, which means they'd have to do a lot of work. But the general intent of the, of the current plan is to have fixes occur when people improve their property. That's part of the improvement.
Interesting, okay.
Again, though, we do get system development fees from, like when the subdivision goes in, he also pays into a general citywide fund. If the city council decides Prospect's become an important street, we need to put sidewalks all the way down it, because lots of little kids are there, we want them on sidewalks, not in the gravel, then they could use that SDC money to connect the sidewalk. But again, it's, it's city money, not your money as an individual. The other potential time you'd get tapped for money would be if all your neighbors say, "We really want to fix all these sidewalks. Will you join a local improvement district?" And that would, you would voluntarily sign a piece of paper that says, "Sure, add 10 percent to my tax bill for the next 10 years to pay for sidewalks."
Okay. I appreciate that. And it's not as though I'm bucking, saying that, you know, I wouldn't pay for it, I didn't, or I wouldn't want to. It's a valuable improvement. I would significantly appreciate the value of our properties. The only thing I didn't want to do was, you know, lose half my front yard.
Right.
You know, and then out of the blue, get a bill for eight or $10,000 for improvements without having a little forewarning on it.
Yeah, no, that's.
And I think this was included in the plan, because the first cross-street headed, what is it, east on Prospect from Holmes, is May Street, and at the end of that, there's a gigantic apartment complex. And people are continually walking up May, down Prospect to Grocery Outlet, and back.
Right.
All day long, every single day. And I'm sure that's why it was put in the plan, as this family-friendly thing, because there is so much foot traffic there.
Yeah, and also, I think if you looked in the transportation plan, the whole cross-section for a city street is 52 feet.
Yes.
So, potentially, at 42 currently, potentially it would be five more on each side at the most. But the intent is, like an 80-year-old tree, to go around it with the sidewalks on it, because we want it to be someplace that people saunter, not, you know, running from the blazing sun or all that. I mean, so.
Yeah, well, there were a lot of exceptions in the city code, and it is listed as a residential route, so there are a lot of, there's a lot of fudge factors built into the residential code. But I just wanted to see if you, as a group, thought it might be worth, it might be, you might be able to work with it at that size. We seem to do okay at this point. It's a little crowded in the middle, but there's still room for two full-size vehicles to pass each other, even with cars parked on both sides. But, you know, you start throwing parkway strips in and tree planting strips and stuff like that, and all of a sudden, we're either going out or we're going in, and there's not much more room to go in. That's for sure.
Well, and actually, part of the science of family-friendly streets is to make them look crowded, so cars don't speed, so that.
You won't have any trouble doing that on Prospect.
And I live on a street like that with a checkerboard, you know, like this guy's got a sidewalk and the people on each side don't, kind of thing. So, that's the idea, though. Part of it is, you know, so that bicyclists aren't threatened, you know, don't feel threatened while they're crossing, pedestrians, all that sort of stuff. I very much, I won't guarantee, but I would very much expect that you'd feel minimal impact from it, in fact, gain by when it does happen 10 years down the road.
Yeah, well, I figured Phase 4 was a way out.
Yeah, it's a 20-year plan.
It's not like we're going to get this next year, this summer, or anything.
Well, as Damon was saying, the whole concept of the TSP is not necessarily that everything that's shown in the plan is going to be done. It's just a framework to allow the city to plan how things would be developed if, if the triggers occur. And as Damon was saying, that those are typically developer-driven. We talked about the overall cost of the transportation plan, and that the city would have to come up with a pot of over $250 million to do all the work that's outlined in that plan.
Still working on it, John.
You're still working on it.
And this may all be a moot point. I mean, you know, our back door is probably within 75 feet of Malala.
And one of the things.
It may not even be a house by then.
John might want to, John Lewis might want to chime in on this, but the idea of the transportation plan was to tailor the development to each of the neighborhoods, so we're not necessarily looking at putting a, the full build-out of a street in a small neighborhood that is only serving a small population. John, did you want to add something?
The only thing I would add is, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to meet with you in the lobby, too, and give you some specifics. I can pull up a map and show you the specifics outside the meeting. But the other thing is, that shows up on our unfunded list, so it's in the plan, which means that it's not a project that we have any identified funding for. But some of those lots are deep, and there's a potential for, you know, a couple lots to be redeveloped. And if, when that were to happen, the, basically what we're looking for is sidewalks and probably some denotation of bikes with traffic, so sharrows, curb extensions, those kind of things that make it just a little bit more friendly for the pedestrian as opposed to the vehicle. So, I don't, I don't think, you know, if you don't have sidewalk in front of your house now, those areas where you see sidewalks are probably going to be extended. So, where they make sense, you know, obviously a tree, or a significant tree that we want to keep, we would keep, but, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate all the information. And I'll try and stay, stay in touch with you.
I've got a question, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah?
Sir, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you seem well-spoken and what have you. We're looking for people on the Transportation Advisory Committee. Give us some thought. Give us some thought. We've got two vacancies on that. And we really do, not desperately need, but we're, we're looking for people that are interested in the community, and you might give us some thought.
I certainly will. Thank you very much. I never even considered anything like that.
If you go to the city's website under Committees, it'll talk about what it is, when they meet, and there'll probably be an application there.
Yeah, I will definitely do that.
These are good, friendly people. You'll enjoy them if you decide to take that move.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You'll get the same salary we get.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the same salary my boss keeps around to get me to work for, isn't it?
I hear they're doubling it next year.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
When you double our salary, you'll still be getting nothing.
He'll never come to another public hearing again, ever.
Now, to be honest, I figured he was somewhere in that range.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Oh, that's yours?
I don't have any other cards for public comments not on the agenda, so we will move to the work session. And the first item on the work session is a presentation of the Clackamas County Transportation System Plan, Item 13-311.
So, this is Karen Burek. She's, she's with Clackamas County and a transportation planner. We work together pretty regularly on a variety of transportation issues. She staffs the C4 Group, which is kind of the electeds that speak on behalf and discuss on behalf regional transportation. And then also on a staff level, we meet monthly on CTEC. So, she's the perfect person to share with you the transportation system plan.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for inviting me to come and talk about the project. I don't know, do you have the ability to actually see the slideshow over there? I kind of feel bad.
We have it on.
Oh, you have it? Okay, perfect then.
We actually have eyes in the back of the room.
I do have one important question. Is that roundabout, is that Wanker's Corner?
Um, I believe so. Wait, let me, let me.
Oh, sure. Not too many lanes.
Look at that. Yeah, the, um, the trees don't look right.
Yeah.
You know where that, that is? I believe that's on 172nd.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I recognize the Canby Ferry, but after that.
Where's the landscaping on it?
So, again, my name is Karen Burek. I'm the Transportation Planning Supervisor at Clackamas County. And we are in the final stages of updating our transportation system plan. I understand that Oregon City has, is just in the, wrapping up their transportation system plan, and that at one of your Planning Commission meetings, there were some issues that were brought up related to kind of the overlap between our planning process and your planning process. So, I'm here to let you know what has gone on within our planning process and answer questions that you might have. So, let's see, let me see if this thing can go away. If I close that. No, that didn't work.
It's in the slideshow, and then?
Okay, got it. And then from beginning?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so, this really isn't the beginning, but that's the first step.
You can see it.
Yeah, that's right. No, that's the first.
There you go.
Yeah. So, as you guys are familiar with, Transportation System Plan is updated every, well, ours is, the last time we did our Transportation System Plan was about 10 years ago. And what it includes is looking at projects that we're going to need over the next 20 years. So, we forecast 20 years out into the future. And one of the things that we have been focusing on currently are the projects that are included within that Transportation System Plan. Our Transportation System Plan project actually looked at both the policies within our comprehensive plan, as well as the projects associated, the needed projects. So, during this discussion, we actually have developed three different categories for the projects. One is the 20-year capital improvement projects, and those are the projects we anticipate receiving the funding for. The preferred capital projects are the projects and investments that we know that are important, but we haven't quite identified the funding, but those would be the first ones we would look at if we access more funds. And then the long-term capital projects are basically projects that are important, but we really don't see where the funds are going to come from. So, the, what we've been focusing on over the last phase of our project is being able to put projects into those categories. And those three categories together create the overall capital improvement plan. So, we have, had this project has been underway since the fall of 2011. So, it's been underway for over a year and a half. And as you can see by this chart, we have had a lot of different coordination. That's what I basically like to say. And a lot of different acronyms. But for the most part, we've been hanging out in the lower portion, working with a Public Advisory Committee, which is the PAC. Paul Edgar here has been helping us out. We have a Technical Advisory Committee, which is a TAC. And then CTEC is what John had talked about. It's the Staff Level Coordinating Committee for all of kind of transportation planners and engineers for staff throughout Clackamas County. And we've been working with those three groups on policies and projects that are related to our Transportation System Plan. The PMT is our Project Management Team. We've been working with a consulting group to help us through this process. And eventually, all of this will go to the Clackamas County Planning Commission, and then on to the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
Before you move on from that slide, does the public input, is that comprised of PAC?
Right, okay, so.
But no general public?
So, the public input has been done in a variety of ways through this process. The county, let me see what the next step is. Oh, look at this, extensive public outreach. Perfect. Okay. So, we are working on, our Transportation System Plan update actually covers both the urban and the rural portions of Clackamas County. We actually have a significant amount of land that's in the urban area, the area around McLaughlin, Oak Grove, Jennings Lodge, kind of anywhere between Gladstone and Milwaukee is all unincorporated Clackamas County. And then areas around the Clackamas Regional Center, as well as the industrial area, unincorporated Clackamas County. And we have roads within those areas. But then we also have roads, obviously, in all of the rural areas. So, we have, we broke the project into phases. We first talked about goals, establishing a vision, goals and objectives, and we worked with our Public Advisory Committee to develop that vision of goals and objectives. And then we had regional open houses. We divided the county into five different areas and advertised that we're having open houses, and we went out, and we just got a few people to show up to those open houses. So, the second round, we actually realized we actually, we have to work closer with the meetings that are already occurring. And in the second round, really, we were focusing on asking people what projects they felt were needed, and talking with them about the different type of analysis that we were going to be doing. So, we worked, again, our Public Advisory Committee has done above and beyond the call of duty, because they did subcommittee meetings to talk about the policies, and then in the different sub-areas, we partnered the, the Public Advisory Committee with members of the community and different CPO leaders to really come up with the different projects. And so, in this final round of outreach, we are just doing a blitz of going out to any CPO, community group, any group that is interested in hearing us talk, and letting them know that we have a virtual open house going on. We also had virtual open houses throughout the other phases of the project.
Being in the area of Redland Road, which is an unincorporated area, but it's still a rural road.
Right.
I have not seen anything about this somewhere. How did you reach out to the public?
Well, you know, I, about last month, I did go to the Redland CPO.
But not the Park Place?
Not in, not the Park Place area. So, it is kind of interesting, and I do think that that's kind of why I'm here, too, is is that there's these lands of overlap that occur here between our jurisdictions. But we really tried to use our community planning organizations as a tool to reach out to the public. We would send, we would provide information, and I don't know if you, if you're living in the county, you would get community, what's it, community news? There's a newspaper that the county puts out four times a year, so we would talk about it there, and then different community organizations, and then press releases. But it's really hard to reach everyone. So, as I said, we developed a vision and goals. So, we were looking at the Transportation System Plan in a very different way than we had previously. So, previously, like I said, we actually had both the rural and the urban divided. When we did our planning process, we put them together. We figured it was a network that works together. And then we also developed different goals for our system. So, we look, the goals are sustainable. We need a system that supports our local business and jobs, one that's livable and local, addresses safety and health issues, is equitable, and is physically responsible. So, historically, Transportation System Plan relied heavily on looking at transportation models and how the road network performed to identify projects, and then prioritize those projects. We have used these goals to help us identify which are the important projects and beginning to prioritize them. So, we really have, really, a suite of projects that are moving forward. So, I think I mentioned this, we had a policy work group along the lines, as you guys are familiar with, there's just a series of policies that help create the community and define these transportation networks in everyday development. So, that's what the policies are there for. And we did look at freight and rural roads, rural transportation, rural equity, and then we looked at the urban areas. We talked about funding, and we had some other policy issues. So, we did a, produced an existing and future conditions report. We took all of the information. So, basically, our starting point was our previous projects and previously plans in previous, previously planned projects that hadn't been completed. We asked people what projects they felt were needed, and then our consultant team came up with projects that were needed due to the analysis that they, that they did. We looked at future conditions, probably all familiar with this. We looked out into the year 2035 and what the projected housing and employment was going to be, and we modeled that. We looked both at what we call the low-build situation, so if we really had very, very little money and few projects, what kind of, what kind of impacts on the system would be? And then the full build was, was assuming that all of the projects in the previous plans were built, which is, which is a lot of projects. And then, so we identified gaps and deficiencies. Where are the problems? Yes?
How much emphasis did you put on the industrial movement of freight, commerce, big trucks and things like that? Did you get in touch with the manufacturers and things of that nature?
Well, we attempted to work with our Economic Development Commission, and actually, currently, we are working with a subcommittee of our Economic Development Commission to really talk about key projects that are important to our industrial areas. We're working with them to make sure that we have prioritized the projects appropriately, so that, and we also have gone and will be having presentations and talked with the Clackamas, let's see, it's the Clackamas County Business Association, Clackamas County Business Association, as well as the Neighborhood Group or the Economic Development Group there in the Clackamas Regional Center. Wilda Parks, who's a part of that, has been a part of our Technical Advisory Committee. So, as I said, we ended up saying, you know what, we need to divide this county into five different areas, and I think there's a map on the next page. Yeah, so this is the extent of the area that we are working with. So, we had, we divided it up into our two urban areas. One was McLaughlin, which is green on the map, and then the orange area is our Clackamas Regional Center slash industrial area. We then had three rural areas. The eastern area is basically areas that are east of the Clackamas River. Our southwest area is the area that, I guess it would be called west of the south, west of the Clackamas River and pretty much kind of south of the Walamette. And then the rural areas around Wilsonville is the final area, which is the northwest area.
Was it population-based or travel-based?
Uh, it was more travel-based. It wasn't really population-based. They do, there was different, different areas that we just felt worked well together. The McLaughlin area has a very active community that has been looking, that has been working to plan for its future, so we wanted to make sure we were looking at that holistically. The Clackamas Regional Center and the industrial area partner together. That's really our core. And so, the other areas, dividing it by the rivers, just kind of was helpful. So, we talked about how there was public input. You know, we ended up, we started off with over 500 projects that we were looking at. And through this process, we have kind of whittled that down to 330 projects on the county system. There's over 1,400 miles of county roads in Clackamas County that we were looking at. We also were working with the state to look at its system, and the state highway system is fairly important in Clackamas County in connecting our communities. So, we also collected information on important projects on the state system. So, with that, then, we took these projects and we estimated, you know, the cost, the future cost of the projects, and possible funding. So, as a part of this, and it sounds like from the comments earlier, you talked about this as well, we did a funding forecast. How much money do we actually anticipate receiving in the next 20 years? And we looked at federal revenue and county road fund revenue, special state programs, local governments, other revenue sources, systems development charges, and urban renewal districts. We estimated with looking at those different sources, because we looked at how we spent the money over the last 10 years and what money kind of came in. We really had accessed a fair amount through state programs, some federal money. And so, we were estimating that we would receive about $444 million over the next 20 years. But before I go on to this, the thing that we found as we were looking at the forecast in comparison to the cost estimates is basically, the $444 million is only about 15 percent of the cost of all of the road projects we had identified. So, that really has led us to the first slide that we had talked about, breaking the, our ultimate capital improvement plan into different categories. ultimate capital improvement plan into different categories. So we took all, to be able to start to put these projects into prioritization categories, we scored them on a variety of different things. So we actually did evaluation criteria for each of the six goals. We did some initial additional analysis. One of the pieces of additional analysis was called our 70% growth analysis. We had a lot of concerns on our Public Advisory Committee that the projections that we were getting at the regional level were just too high. They were going to tell us that there were too many drivers out on the road and causing us to do road improvements that really weren't needed. So we said, well, what, let's do, let's make an assumption that we only received 70% of the population or employment growth, and then tell us which projects are still needed at that capacity level. So that's helped kind of prioritize that, those projects that are needed first. We also did an analysis called DTA, which is a dynamic traffic analysis. It's a special type of transportation modeling. And we applied that in the Clackamas Regional Center area because we had some really challenging issues, a couple of very contentious projects. And we wanted to be able to provide information about the traveler experience. And then we also made sure that projects with identified needs, those being gaps and deficiencies, really were prioritized as well. Because there were projects out there that were just recommended by the public, but they weren't necessarily needed in the same way that other projects were needed. So we looked at all of those. And then what we did is we had an initial scoring, and then we worked with our Public Advisory Group and the small area groups to review that scoring, make sure we kind of ground-truth it, did it make sense? We worked with our Technical Advisory Committee, see if there were changes. The Technical Advisory Committee was able to look countywide and pull together the different recommendations. And then finally, it went to our Public Advisory Committee that that is currently the recommendation we're talking about with the public. So as I said, the estimated forecast revenue only covers about 15% of the projects. And we, there, so there are definitely trade-offs that are, have been going on to be able to create these lists. When you're trying to only figure out what that top 15% is, and that's that 20-year capital improvement projects, we really have to be careful on which of those projects we're identifying. And then the second category is basically, if we doubled the amount of money that we anticipated receiving, what would those projects be? And then 70% of the projects are in that third category. I had, I handed out a flyer, and you can kind of see on the back, there's a map that's a sample of the southwest area. But, you know, the red are basically projects in that 70% category. We really don't know how they'll be funded. The green ones are the priority, the top, tier one, we're calling it, and then the orange are tier two. So, you know, there's definitely more red on this than there is green.
You mean, the only red I see says remove. Are you talking about the purple?
Oh, yeah. So I, I see it as, I guess it's pink. You're right.
Yeah, it's kind of purplish.
Yes.
Maroon.
Maroon. Okay. I do need a wider color spectrum. So right now, we, the Public Advisory Committee met in late April with this recommendation. So we will be, oh, it says May 1st, but it's actually May 15th. The virtual open house opens up in two days and runs from May 15th to June 15th. We're going out and we're doing presentations to the community. We are emailing our interested parties, so different people along the way have been added to our interested party list. We have a website. We have social media that we've been using. And so that's how we're really kind of pushing out, and we're getting people to comment on these different projects, asking people, you know, are these in the right categories? Are there any, are there projects that you think should be in a different category? So.
Would that online have specific, I'm trying to use my.
Oh, and you know what?
Specific roads and areas that you can look at?
So here, because that is really ridiculous, isn't it? It's really supposed to be more of a.
An example.
It's an example.
It's a good one, I just couldn't tell where some.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Here, I'll get it open.
There we go.
He knows who he is.
So anyway, this is an example. This is the, again, this is for the southwest area. This is only one-fifth of our project area, but I felt this would be the area that you may have the most interest in. People can comment on projects throughout the entire county. The webpage is broken up into five different rooms, so it focuses on the five different areas. And so these are a little bit more legible. And then what is, then on the list, there are project numbers, and so then you can see the, what the projects are. And so it didn't, okay. One of the things, is that's the end. Oh, I just wanted, kind of what our next steps are is, after we receive the public comment, we'll be having one final meeting with our Public Advisory Committee to talk about the different changes we recommend in response to the public comment. And that will be at the end of summer. We anticipate going to our Planning Commission in, in October, September and October of this year, and then ultimate adoption in December. So I do want to call your attention, too, before I take some more questions. In the flyer that I provided, on the second page, it talks about the different types of projects that are included within our Clackamas, within the transportation system plan. And so we have projects, we, that are called upgrade projects, which are basically improvements that will help all modes. They're, they include a capacity, so improvements that would help automobiles, they improve, they improve the sidewalk system and the bike lane system. So there are projects that would have different elements of all three of those. An upgrade act of transportation is pretty much a, either a sidewalk or a bike lane project, but it really, it would not change the capacity of the road and improve, make improvements for the automobile. There are some projects that are just vehicle capacity improvements. There are projects that are on this list to address safety issues. There are a few new roadway projects. One big thing that we did as a part of this project is actually include multi-use paths. Historically, for Clackamas County, trails had been, multi-use trails had been indicated on our bike plan, but hadn't been folded into our overall capital improvement plan. So that was a pretty big step. So there is, there are bridges, as well as projects related to intelligent transportation systems, that's communications and working with, getting better capacity out of the network, so we already have through technology. So you can see here that there's kind of a breakdown of the type of projects on this page, kind of just gives an idea of the distribution, that there really is kind of diversity and where, where we would see at least the tier one projects.
See at the bigger map.
Yes.
The area around Redland is two-tone. I'm just curious.
Two-tone, yes, that's a special area. What that is, is there's two different types of projects on there. So Redland Road has, and we also corresponded the number color with the project. So there is 2073. There's this special way that we do these numbers. So if there's a U before the number, this is our system, it was a previously planned project. It was already in some other plan. If it's a, if it's a project that has a 1,000, that's a project that was recommended by the public. And then if it's a 2,000 project, that's a project that's recommended by the consulting team. And so the 2,000 series often is what's called a traffic safety audit corridor. It was identified as an area that had a high number of accidents and that there was a need to look at that corridor comprehensively to find out what kind of fixes would be needed to improve that corridor. So I am guessing if you looked at 2073, it's a traffic safety audit corridor. And then there's another project, which may be this U-196, that may be, look on this. And then there numerically, so U-196 is Redland Road, 400 feet west of Holly Lane. And that would be to widen for shoulders and bike ways. So on that little segment. So, so there's a variety of projects there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So you read it.
Sorry. The second phase of the question is, you've done all this, looks great. How much coordinating did you do with the cities? And I know you had some of our people there on the CTACs, but what if our priorities in Oregon City was to widen Redland Road within the city limits to five lanes with a turn lane in the center? You know, nothing, nothing, well, I'm going to be blunt, nothing sucks worse than changing county lines and going from beautiful road to because jurisdictions changed and priorities changed. I mean, I see it a lot down in Lain and Lynn County because they come right up and, and, you know, it seems like that would be a good idea, a good way to synergize our expenses.
We coordinated in a variety of ways. One of the things, and this was something that John and I had talked about fairly early in the process, and was the approach that we chose to take during our planning process, is that there are actually county roads that are located within cities, city boundaries. And I think.
We have a few of them.
Quite a few, yeah. And we felt that it was best to defer to the city planning processes for identification of what the important projects are. So for those areas that are within the city limits, we deferred to the, the city area. So if we look at, there had been a project, right now, actually, there's this, it looks like it's a trail project. The multi-use trails are a little funky because they actually, since they kind of, trails go in and out of jurisdictions, it's really hard to indicate those pieces that are distant ours. So if it's a trail, you'll kind of see on these different maps that we included both, both areas inside the city and outside the city, but we wanted to show support for those trails. But the actual projects that had been along Beaver Creek in the area of Oregon City, such as, that came out of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, are carried by Oregon City and not Clackamas County. So we didn't want, you know, overlap in those areas. But there are the areas also that are in those concept plan areas that may be outside of the city limits, but have planning processes associated with them. So one of the areas that is, is very unique, and we have talked with folks that both live along, is Holly Lane. So I believe that Christine and Christie had talked and brought up some issues there. And I think that's one place where we actually carry two different things in our plans. We at Clackamas County are planning that for a rural road, as long as it's within Clackamas County jurisdiction, we would, it's a minor arterial that we would see being built out to minor arterial standards. And the project that we would anticipate there would be basically paved shoulders. And that's the improvement, as long as it's in unincorporated Clackamas County. Whereas it is an area that I believe had, that is of importance to Oregon City, and with, I don't know where it actually ended up, but initially, the project, there had been discussions about the fact that that was a street that into the future would be an important urban connector. So that's one area where we actually carry two different things, but depending on when it develops, that's the, kind of the cross-section it would develop to. So, and then we work at, in our, we work together in the very specialized processes, like I've been working with Pete on the, the South End Concept Plan and, you know, providing discussions there. But basically, the work that's done at the city is done for planning for urban uses, and we typically are planning for rural uses.
Right. I just, I guess, my question was more about, you know, the, the transition point. I mean, South End Road, we want it to be four-lane. I'm just throwing this out.
Yeah, yeah.
By the way, public, we want it to be four lanes, but at a certain point, it goes into county jurisdiction. Where do you start the transition from four lanes to two lanes inside the city? So when it hits county lines, it's two? Or do we go four through the whole city and use county time to transition? Do we split it? You know, I mean, and, and it just seems like that would be an opportunity for both of us to use each other's money to gain in general for, for, I mean, it's not just us, you know, Westland and the Stafford Triangle area and, you know, all, all this, every point that county roads impact a city.
And I do think that that's why our participation in your different concept planning processes is important.
Before we move from Redland Road.
Yeah.
Just wanted to ask a question. I looked through your numbers right here. Is it too late for public input at these upcoming meetings for prioritizing some of your projects?
No, that's exactly what we're doing right now. This is the time. And so, so we, the specific questions that are, that the virtual open house has is basically, is this project in the right place? And please tell us if it needs to be moved up or not.
I mean, you've got some great projects there planned for Redland, and I'm sure everybody around here is probably tired of hearing me talk about Redland Road. But as Christine and other ones know, for 10 years, I've been saying that the developers along that area, when they want to do the Park Place Concept Plan, have been saying they need another road to circumvent Redland Road because there's a low point near Abernathy Creek where it always floods. So it's a matter of safety because we've heard that fire trucks can't get through and ambulances when that floods, and they have to find another way around. That's been used as, as a reason why it should be. But nonetheless, that area always floods almost every other year, it seems, and it makes it unpassable to most people. So there is going to be development on that end. It seems that Redland Road, besides needing to be widened, it needs to be raised somewhat as long as they're doing the, the sides in those kind of projects so that when the, when the Abernathy Creek does overflow, it doesn't impact or MP traffic coming in and out of Redland into Oregon City.
And so that's specifically in that area.
Around Lexi Road area. It's a low point right there. And I've been waiting for Clackamas County to, to talk to somebody to say it needs to be improved at some point. I think anybody who uses that road in the winter months, the spring months, would tell you that. But anyway, go on.
They're just going to build a levee on each side since it works so well in New Orleans.
Call the creek back.
That's right.
Get yourself one of those cars that can go in the.
I don't have to use Redland for that. I go out.
Give you a boat.
That's what I said.
I go out Bradley.
He needs a boat, a car that can turn, the amphibious car that turns into a boat. That's what you get.
I just hear it from all the other people in Park Place and about Redland.
Well, they got to stop speeding.
So are there other questions or other specific things you are hoping to learn?
Well, we were hoping you were going to say you had like 250 million extra bucks you were going to throw away.
Yeah.
Well, something for 20.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, it is a very different environment to be planning in right now with trying to address the fact of these fiscal constraints that we're in. And I have to admit that it, it is frustrating at times because sometimes the, the easy answer that people hear is, oh, we don't have enough money, so therefore, we shouldn't plan. We still need to plan these facilities because you never know, one, when, you know, resources might become available, or you, you do need to understand and, and help developers and get what you can when development comes in. But it is frustrating being able to only say, wow, there's only 15% of the projects, you know, we might only see that amount of change. So I do believe that there are conversations going on with different elected officials, and I don't know if you guys are, are familiar with C4, which is the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. And they've been talking about the need throughout Clackamas County for more funds, specifically for transportation improvements. And it is something that jurisdictions have to work together on to be able to move forward with that. But we will be looking at different ways to increase our revenue sources as well.
Hey, Karen.
Yeah.
Would you mind going back to the slide that shows the, the way, the, the funds that you are looking at? Federal revenue, county fund, road fund, state revenue programs, local governments and agencies, other revenues, SDCs, urban renewal. So I just wanted to point out to this group, we've kind of limited our list to SDCs. And I think this is interesting. I think it's, you know, it's, it's, there's, I guess, as bad as our picture looks, I don't think it looks as bad as the county's with, with regard to funding. So, you know, that, we see, we'll see often these same funding sources, except for maybe, you know, urban renewal now is, is a question. But, you know, we get federal revenue sometimes. We don't get the county road fund, but we have our own payment maintenance utility fee, state, every, so I guess, and, and they're projecting to fund 15%, and we had a, we had a much bigger number than that. So sometimes I, I get frustrated with how we share revenue sources. than that. So, sometimes I get frustrated with how we share revenue sources, for instance, on, you know, facilities that are jointly owned. I mean, if it's Redland Road we're talking about, for instance, and it's in the city, you know, a lot of that traffic is county-generated. But then, when you look at the mass of project lists that show up on the county's TSP and the projected revenue, it just, I get the fact that we're all struggling to pay for transportation funding, so.
I had a question, Karen, that I just, we just finished listening to lots and lots of public comment, observations about the Oregon City TSP. And I didn't take a statistical poll of it, but I'd say well over 50% of the comments that we had during our hearings on that plan were from the people in the Holly Lane District. And it was obvious that there was a real high level of interest in how Holly Lane was improved or developed. And frankly, we were catching a lot of flak here on a road that's not in our jurisdiction. So, we were kind of pointing the people on Holly Lane to talk to the county because we had heard that this TSP was being developed. And so, my question for you is, this plan is a year and a half old. What is the potential possibility for a project that's listed as a Tier Three to move up to a Tier Two or Tier One project at this point in your process?
So, again, this is the point in the process where we are taking public input. We did, so throughout, let's see, how did it get to Tier Three to begin with? So, it was-
And I do note that under the PAC meeting comments, there were two comments that they recommended that it be moved to a Tier One project. So, I was just curious how you got there, and is there a potential for it to move up?
Well, actually, there was the recommendation from a member of the public that it be moved up, and then we had our PAC members do a vote on it, and we didn't have sufficient support from our PAC members to move that tier project up. But still, in this process, again, like I said, we're still collecting comments, the project management team will make some recommendations. And I think that is a project that will likely, the project management team would make a recommendation to move up. And then, we will have to see where the Public Advisory Committee falls on that. But we have been at the county working at kind of a variety of different levels because the capital improvement plan addresses large-scale capital projects. It would, and in this case, it would be bike lanes. And there are a variety of issues related to Holly Lane. And so, the citizens along Holly Lane have been meeting with, have met with a variety of people at the county and have worked with our traffic safety engineers. We actually had a, there was a sort of a mini traffic safety audit that was done last year, last year in February, to really kind of tool down on what are the problems out here and what are the type of fixes that we can do. Because when it comes down to it, the issues are safety and speed. Those are really important concerns to residents of Holly Lane. And so, how those concerns are addressed come in a variety of sources. So, they have looked so far, they did, as a result of that traffic safety audit, the speed was reduced. There were places of 45 miles per hour, and it was reduced to 40. There are still concerns that that's too high of a speed, but that is what came out of the speed study, as well as working with the state and kind of the regulations that they, the guidance they give with regards to speed limits. There has been signing that has been put in. They put, done some work, some rock shoulders and work there. They've tried to address some site distance issues with landscaping. And then, they worked with the school to put in some permanent recourse signs, which are only a few, just a handful of the different items that were identified. And then, as different monies became available, other improvements can be done. But I really asked the safety engineers, what is the important thing to do next? And the next thing that would be important to do would be putting in paved shoulders. Now, with paved shoulders, the road is a little wider. Are you gonna encourage higher speeds? You know, there's this whole mix of things that goes on out there. So, but it is something that could improve safety. But we do have to work with just, one of the things that the safety engineer talks about is that safety is not just how a road is engineered and built. It's people and how they choose to drive. And so, it's, there's an education piece that goes along with safety and getting people to make different choices. But one of the things that is going to be impacting Clackamas County, I think, in a kind of a subtle way at first, but probably more and more as time goes on, with respect to the fact that there's lack of funding for these bigger road improvements, is I do believe it will end up putting more pressure on those side roads. So, as Highway 213 doesn't have the, you know, needed improvements, that people are gonna make different choices. So, I think overall, again, that gets back to us all working together and working with the state to be able to fund those improvements that are needed so people aren't making choices to take alternative routes. But Holly Lane isn't in a tricky place because there is kind of urban growth on each ends of it.
Well, I would strongly recommend that regardless of what the state says, 45 miles an hour on Holly Lane is not appropriate.
Oh, it's 40 now.
Yeah, because it's, that's too fast.
Right.
And we already know that with it being unimproved the way it is, they're already doing well in excess of that. And so, it's not, I, you know, paving the shoulders is not gonna make it safer. It's just gonna make people go faster.
Yes. It's difficult to understand exactly what the right choices are.
Yeah.
Well, you could bank the shoulders and they could take it just a little faster.
Like the Speedway.
Yeah, but then you'd be having emergency services up there a lot, and that would not be helpful either.
We actually had some conversations about other roads such as Pease Road, and one of the things that came up was hand-in-hand with the transportation plan is the enforcement element. And that obviously doesn't have anything to do with the road itself. It's keeping people, you know, encouraging people to obey the law.
Right, right. Well, unfortunately, I don't remember acronyms. There's like five Es of safety. It's like engineering, education, enforcement, and two others Es, but I don't know what those are.
Those would be important.
Yeah.
If only we could have it all done by osmosis.
Yes, exactly.
The red color I noticed here, it says it's, it indicates changes made post-GAPs, number three meetings.
Oh, yeah.
So, the red ones, is that something that sooner or later will move up as a priority or something?
No, it just means like the description of the project changed. So, the red font.
There's red, blue. I was just looking at some of the other projects. I was trying to find, let's say, like U 317. It's not, or 371. It's not in Oregon City city limits, but I couldn't find some of the bigger numbers there outside the city limits.
Oh, you know, the other piece is, is that the project numbers on the state system are not on this list.
I see, okay.
Because we divided the two lists up, because ultimately, the projects on the county system are the ones that we had the constrained forecast for. We don't have the same constrained forecast that, the ODOT hasn't given us a constrained forecast. So, all we are doing with their projects is putting them in high, medium, and low categories.
I see, okay.
But, so they don't end up showing up on this list. So, that's a little bit of a challenge.
You know, I see the technical aspect and the reaching out aspect of both the city's plan and the county's plan as being exemplary. I really do. I think both the entities have done a good job. Where I see the weakness in this thing is, is the money. And I don't see any real concerted effort expressed in a plan to go after that money. Somewhere, it's there. And you're not gonna do anything with any plan as long as you don't have the money to implement it.
Bob, we know it's in your pocket.
Yeah.
We just have to wait for Wednesday's draw.
Yeah, right. I'm working on it. But, you know, if I had one suggestion to make, there'd be a chapter or something in one of these documents that says, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna put somebody's feet to the fire to get one of the most fundamental aspects of any plan that makes a city work is its transportation. Because we use it every day. We all get in our cars and we drive. 18-wheelers get in their truck and they drive the Coca-Cola oil or the Rice-A-Roni or this or that to market. It makes the community work. And without these transportation plans being healthy and safe, you know, emphasis on safety, the community is gonna die on a bind. And we've got to go after that money. Somehow, we've gotta get a plan, a concerted effort through our commissions, our councils, our representatives to say, this is it. If you wanna get this economy going, you help us with our transportation plan. We've got the technology. We've got the experts to put it together. We've got shovel-ready projects. Let's get her done.
And I do think that the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee is at that place. They've actually are working with a marketing firm to talk about communicating with the public about the different options. And I believe they're working towards agreement on different things. So, they're looking at the vehicle registration fee. They have looked at a variety of different options, such as a gas tax and whatnot. But certain things have, they've determined really aren't worth the effort. You won't get as much for all the effort you would have to put into it. Clackamas County itself, I know that the board chair has talked about creating road districts that would actually provide for some funding. Because we don't have the same transportation utility fee that Oregon City has, that is that fee that's associated, you know, on my utility bill every month. And so, but the residents of Clack, rural Clackamas County or unincorporated Clackamas County don't pay that. But that's a very important part of, you know, investing in our transportation system is maintaining it. And we also have been faced with kind of cutbacks or reductions in what's called rural secure schools funding, secure rural schools funding, which is basically the, had been the substitute for the timber money. Since we have, there's over 50% of the land in Clackamas County is in forest land, is in federal land. So, we, over time, had been receiving money that had gone to paying for roads, and now, we're not receiving that anymore. So, we really are in pretty, you know, tight situation. So, I believe over the next few months, you'll be hearing more about that.
Well, I know I put you on the spot with my statement, but, and it's political in nature because you've gotta deal with the, your congressman and those people and the state, you know, the governor's in his office and things like that. But it's a weakness in these plans because I don't see that initiative being taken. You see, we come to this wall and say, wham, we got her planned, but we just can't implement it. You see, where do you go from there? Well, you talk to your elected officials is where you go. So, there's gotta be, there's gotta be an orchestrated effort to bring that together so that we can quit talking about it and do it, you know, really.
Well, I agree with you, Bob. The problem is, is that there's a lot of people on fixed incomes of social security. They already field taxed out enough. They got fees, utility fees. They've got so many things. There's just only so much that people can put out.
I understand.
And I know it's important, but-
And I agree with you, Tom. I'm not arguing that point.
You know, if you, here's the issue, Tom. If you're on a fixed income, some of those people are still driving to the store, still going here or there, and everybody has to pay some amount.
But they're paying their utility fees on the bills. They're doing all that.
Yeah, we all gotta.
Insurance is going, and especially health insurance is going up for a lot of those older seniors.
I know. We all have to chip in.
The simple solution is to bring the Corps of Engineers and the Seabees back from overseas and put them to work. I mean, if they can spend a billion dollars a day overseas, they should be able to spend it in each state.
Does-
That's a different story.
You have any more to your presentation?
Nope, that's it. So, basically, if you are interested in the online open house, which will be open in two days, you can go to the website, which is here on the bottom of the front page for more information.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for inviting me.
Good, good presentation. Good.
Commissioner Kidwell, can I say something? Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave pretty quick, well, right after this, I wanna head out. But I wanna say something about the McLaughlin Boulevard Phase Three project. It's a grant that we're pursuing. County also has a project on the list, and we're finding ourselves in a difficult situation of basically three projects that are similar in size and money, each of which consumes just about, our project would consume all the funding available for Clackamas County if we were to get it. So, it is kind of a precarious situation, and we're planning to, again, communicate more about that. But right now, the public comment period is open for, through Metro for that planning process. So, they want public comments. And it's really pretty easy to find. If you just go to the Metro website, they've got an online system. And I think this group is the kind of influential member, you're the kind of people who I think your opinion is valued in those surveys. They're personal surveys. I don't know if you can do it more than once, but I'd like you to at least do it once, each of you, if you could get on that website.
This is different from opt-in?
I'm gonna tell you to support it, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I think I-
Tell us again real quick what McLaughlin Boulevard Phase Three is, because-
Well, it's Malala, right?
Or Malala, sorry. Did I say McLaughlin?
Yeah, you said McLaughlin, and I thought, okay.
Let's get that right for-
It starts with an M.
Yeah, it's Malala Avenue from Beaver Creek Road to 13. Now, there's sections of that that have been improved by private developers, but there's other sections that have not. And so, those sections that have not need to be improved. And on our website, I know I referred you to the Metro website, but on our website right now, one of the key featured items is the online survey. So, there's a link there. And it's, so it'd be improved signalization, pavement curb changes, stormwater enhancements. It would be, it would help, you know, that we've got a lot of affordable housing on one side of Malala and a lot of shopping on the other side. So, a lot of ADA improvements could happen to that. You know, that's an old state highway through there, and we've kind of been living with that for several years. And what we'd like to see happen is something similar that's happened to the other sections of Malala with better channelizations, maybe elimination of some driveways to help access on there and make that a little safer. TriMet has partnered with us on that project, and they'd like to do some improvements as well. So, we think it's, we think it's a project that's competitive and that would be a good project. And so, we're just now getting the word out. And since I was here, I appreciate the time to be able to share that with you.
Great. Thank you, John.
So, you want to go on to the Metro website and our website?
No, you can get through it, you can get to it through our website. There's a link there.
But if we can get through it twice by going to two different places.
No cheating.
It's not cheating if they let us. That's true.
You can, each person in your household could do it.
That's right.
I've already got that figured out.
Okay. The next item on our agenda then is the presentation on geologic hazards overlay district 13312.
Good evening, planning commissioners. So, Laura had asked me to come and give you some background on the geologic hazard overlay district that we have in place. And I'm not sure how, how much tailoring I may need to do at the end of the, of the presentation to talk about transportation improvements specifically, but I just wanted to go through this PowerPoint. It's about 23 slides. Laura had presented this, a similar PowerPoint to this in 2011 to talk about the code, and that's the same code that's in place today. So, I'm gonna go through this, and hopefully, this will shed light on some of the longer-range planning and how it is influencing our implementation of the geologic hazards code. So, basically, this all starts with statewide planning goals that are promulgated at a local level. Statewide Planning Goal Seven is natural hazard planning, which requires that local governments adopt plans to reduce risks to people and property from natural hazards. And statewide goals defines what natural hazards are. And this goal is implemented at the local level through our comprehensive plan, our zoning code, and our overlay district code. One of the things that I've been asked to provide was some of the background information and sources of information and geologic information that are specifically referenced in our code and in our geologic hazard overlay district map. So, these- So these sources, many of which are provided by Portland State University and by the Department of Geology and Minerals Industries, are specifically referenced in the code, and there is a requirement of any applicant who proposes development in the geologic hazard overlay zone to reference these sources of information when they're putting together a development proposal. So I'll come back and talk about these a little bit as well. Within the geologic hazard overlay code, there are several references to the following terms which are defined in the code: geological assessment, geologic hazard areas, the geologic hazards overlay zone, a geotechnical engineer, a geotechnical remediation, and geotechnical report. I'm not going to go into detail on these definitions, but I just wanted to let you know where they are. I did want to talk about this definition, though, which is the geologic hazards overlay zone. Per code, this is defined as any area identified on the city's steep slope and landslide area map, which is the map that you see on the wall over here. This map was adopted in 2010.
Which map?
The slope and geology map.
The colored one?
The colored map, yeah, over there. And that was adopted with the code section as an update to the 2008 code adoption. It references landslide areas, and it references any area within 200 feet of a known landslide area, and anywhere, any slope over 25% or more. It also references the plastic map that is to the left of that, which is Dogami Bulletin Number 99, which is a map produced in 1979 by the, by the state. References not only some of these known hazards, but also fault lines that run through Oregon City in two areas, as well as high groundwater areas and other landslide, or what they call debris flow areas. So those were, those are referenced on the map to the right as well.
Not to interrupt you.
Sure.
But to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Would you say professionally that we live in an interesting geological area?
Fascinating.
Fascinating, okay. Not interesting, but fascinating, not absolutely, another tear up.
Yeah, I mean, when you go back to the very first slide, which I showed here, just from a color perspective, the purple zone that we're showing on this map is the entire blob regulatory review area, which, and the yellow area is the area that is either already developed or flat, and you can see that pretty much approximates where our urban growth boundary is. So from a development constraint perspective, it's tremendously important to know where these areas are. And it's also important to note that a lot of these geologic hazard areas overlay or are interspersed with our natural resource overlay district and our streams and wetland buffers. Not all, not everywhere, that's for sure, but in many cases.
Pete, since he asked a question, I'll ask one too on that last one.
Sure.
1979 is quite a long time ago, 30 some years ago, isn't there something more current than 1979?
Right, yeah. The code actually requires in any subsequent Dogami mapping to be referenced as well, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that.
And that's the most recent, is 79?
No, no, it's not.
Oh, okay.
No, there are, the sources that I referenced earlier here.
Okay.
1996, I'm sorry, 1992, Portland State did the Newell Creek Canyon environmental assessment. Portland, PSU did landslides in Portland, Oregon, resulting from the storm of February 1996, along with a map, database, and evaluation from that in 1998. Then you have various reports coming out of Dogami from this point forward, including the work that they've been doing regionally on the landslide susceptibility map, I think is the working title, which, last check, was that they were close to adopting that, but it's basically an online interactive tool that you've been going through.
These other references in 2011 were incorporated into our overlay district.
Yeah, they were.
So we took the most recent information we had when we did our code update in 2010, incorporated that into the map. So when you hear comments like, we only regulate on 25% or more, that's not accurate. We actually have incorporated where historic landslides have happened, where slumps have happened, those areas that identified. What we regulate is the density on 25% or more. So if you, let's say you're on a slope of...
I'm going to talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, and any other area that's identified by a geotechnical engineer or geologist licensed in Oregon as being susceptible to any of these potential hazards, and, you know, whose opinion is respected, can be considered a geologic hazard overlay zone under our code as a sort of a catch-all. But I'll talk more about that. So what are geologic hazards? We'll go through them one by one. Land that is with 25% or greater slope, and we calculate there's approximately 720 acres of this within the current city limits. And land within 50 feet of slope, 25% or greater. So toe or the crest of that slope would also fall into a review area, because if you're excavating at the toe or the crest of any of these slopes, you're potentially needing additional review.
Did you intentionally choose my house as...
As I said, this is a fascinating area. Laura did this slide in 2000.
Literally, like, this is any slide, yeah.
Right there?
We'll put a big star on it for our presentation.
Oh, okay.
And my dad's house was right there.
Well, congratulations, I think you're outside of that.
Oh, I'm right inside.
Oh, you're right inside it?
Yeah, it's okay, though, I have a building on stilts on the slope.
So then we have the known landslides. So this includes both ancient landslides, debris flows, and the slides that were documented by Dogami.
Wow, okay, I can already tell you it's in error.
Okay.
Because the, if you look at the ball field, the, on the south side, the big square, the first big square, they lost like 40 feet of property in 96. It went right into the...
Well, that's within the geologic hazard overlay, though, because of the slope, so this one shows it.
I'm just saying it's a known landslide, I watched it.
Okay, yeah, so as, as we get that information, it would certainly be part of the data. Land within 200 feet of known landslides, so that's going to pull in that tax lot. Anyway, in addition to those areas, as I mentioned, any other areas identified by a suitably qualified geotechnical engineer or engineering geologist. So what does this mean? It means that we have regulatory review boundary for all of these areas, which is shown as the area in purple, and the review boundary encompasses about 1,800 acres within the city.
Is this for anybody asking for a building permit, a review of that area?
It depends on what kind of activities proposed. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So is your property within the geologic hazards overlay? You can call us directly and we'll check for you. You can also turn on this layer online and check to see whether the regulatory boundary touches your property. And then based on that, you would talk to the city engineer or to the planning staff and determine what, whether you need to go through a review process. So what types of projects?
Can you go back one more?
Yeah.
On the bottom right, we have an Oregon City Property Report. You can actually put your address in and click a button that says Property Report. And what it'll kick out is your zoning, but then in the bottom, we have overlay districts. So if you're in a natural resource overlay district, a steep slope, those would be identified as yes, just by clicking that report. It pulls our GIS data and puts it into one format. So you'd have zoning, lot size, neighborhood association, and then it would pick it up.
So anybody can go online and...
Any bits, all that information.
OC web maps, good stuff.
Our GIS department does a really good job for a city this size, I think we have one of the better GIS programs I've ever seen, and it's, it's great tool.
I actually looked at a particular item up on the house that we bought last year to see some of that information, and it's very helpful.
Good, good.
Is that separate from the planning process, Tony? Is that a separate department, your...
GIS is under Community Development, we work pretty closely with them. I mean, you know, it originated in concert with planning.
Yeah.
Back, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And it's, and it's created, and it's just continued to expand to what data we're able to put into the site. You know, it's expanded from basic zoning to overlays to natural hazard areas to flood inundation to, you know, we have probably close to eight, nine, 10 years of overhead pic, you know, photos of the city that can all be there, and now we've expanded it to infrastructure, so water, sewer, storm, you know, down and even pipe size, manhole depth. So as we're getting this information and with the technology advancements that you've had, you know, before, you know, you'd click on it, it would grind away for five, 10 minutes. Now we're able to package that material in such a way that it can be presented much quicker. And so that's available online through our planning department.
So as a quasi judicial board sitting in consideration of a zone change or this or that, that falls in that category, that information is then included in the staff report as an exhibit that we have to be responsible to consider? In case this goes into litigation, we say, yeah, I considered it, I read it, you know?
Right, so for example, like this property looks like it's in an unstable slope, and there's probably a natural resource overlay. So when we present the staff report to you, we would have 1744, and we'd address the criteria, we'd have 1742 for natural resource overlay, we'd address those criteria. So we identify those at the pre-op and then incorporate those into the staff report and decision.
You're pretty smart, don't you?
So what types of projects would go through this review? Just about any development activity, small or large, requires some type of review. So what do I mean by some type of review? I'm going to show you that, but we also have specific exemptions from the geologic hazard overlay, which are mentioned in the code. And this means that somebody says, well, here's what I'm proposing, do I have to go through this geologic review process or not? And based on whether it meets one of these definitions, it would either be exempt or not. So excavation of less than two foot in depth or less than 25 cubic yards of volume, construction or replacement of utility lines and existing city rights of way or public easements, alterations of a structure of less than 500 square feet that does not involve grading, fill of less than two feet in depth or 25 cubic yards, an emergency action to prevent imminent threat to public health, safety, or danger to property does not have to go through geologic review because you're responding to an emergency. And removal of noxious vegetation. So those are a couple of...
And I think, you know, and it's like for construction replacement of utility lines and existing city right-of-way or public easement, just because they're not necessarily going through the review doesn't mean they're being, they're being designed for the situation. It's just because it's a public agency doing it, we have our own design standards that we rely on, which are consistent or probably exceed, you know? So it's not that they're not adequately constructing the infrastructure, it's just they have standards that they apply to when they put infrastructure into the public right-of-way.
So, what does the review entail? Unless exempt, so it's, we've got to show compliance with Chapter 1744, and that includes doing analysis of the site conditions. Examples include soil, groundwater, drainage, topography, tree removal, grading, erosion control, construction type, how it affects adjacent properties, impact of development on the lot and adjacent properties, and procedures to ensure that requirements are completed. Examples of some of the standards in the code are the limitation of construction dates to primarily May through October to avoid wet weather. Requirements for terracing to avoid large vertical cuts and fills. With respect to residential development and new residential development, residential density is limited to two dwelling units per acre on slopes 25 to 35%. And slopes above 35% development is prohibited with certain exceptions for infrastructure and utilities, and in some cases, road and access. With respect to limiting disturbances on slopes, 25 to 35%, you can remove no more than, or 50% or 4,000 square feet of the surface area, either by grading or stripping of vegetation. And above 35%, you have to avoid locating roads, utilities, and public facilities on or across slopes exceeding 35%.
Does that center picture the Oregon City before the elevator went in?
Yeah.
Right.
So basically, what you're saying is 15th Street would never be built under today's standards?
Well, engineering standards change as well, and so I think there's an avoidance mechanism in this code, and there are much, much higher levels of review and requirements for engineering. But if there is an alternative to that, I think, you know, it's one of those tough things to be... So here's where we talk about what types of projects would be reviewed and how they would be reviewed. The first picture that I've shown is the exemption where you wouldn't be going through any kind of review. And next, the next level of review is typically reserved for pre-existing development where you might be remodeling an existing home, or doing limited grading, or excavating a basement on an existing house. You have basically one property, and you're, you would normally approach the building and planning department and see, should I go through review or not? And this is typically an in-house review by the city engineer. They have to attach findings of compliance with the standards in this case. And so if they were proposing a brand-new house in a geologic hazard overlay zone, that would be a different level of review, which is on the right-hand side of the page. In that case, we're going to review it through the land use process with public notice and comment. This would apply to new site plans, new subdivisions, and the, we're going to take this to a type two land use review process or a type three land use review process if there is any kind of variance request to the code where it would come, need to come before the planning So one of the things I was asked to talk about was, I think, what level of geologic review would happen with concept plans? And I gave a couple of handouts to you. One is a preliminary geologic and geotechnical evaluation prepared for the Park Place Concept Plan by company GRI. So use that as a reference as I go through this. Concept plans follow Metro Title 11 as well as statewide planning goals. In particular, they need to show compliance with statewide planning goals for natural hazards in addition to their other statewide planning goals. We need to do an analysis and findings for adoption of how the proposed concept plan would comply with Goal 7, and that includes what level, what recommendations for future development review. Concept plans also are required to provide a buildable lands analysis, which shows how much developable area is within the concept planning area. And by doing that, they basically take out steep slopes over 25%, natural resource areas, and other undevelopable land right-of-way and easement areas and things of that nature. The level of geologic hazard review typically done for concept plans is really big picture. It's not site-specific, but it provides recommendations for future site-specific evaluation, so that you can implement those when you implement, when you implement the concept plan by adopting it. Examples, Park Place, where the firm GRI was contracted by the city with input from Public Works Department, and they are geotechnical environmental consultants. They provided sort of a... environmental consultants. They provided sort of a, what, a preliminary geologic and geotechnical evaluation. They did a site tour. They looked at existing conditions, and they also did a literature review for what had been done in the past. So everything from nineteen seventy-nine, Bulletin Ninety-Nine, up through whatever was current at that time, they referenced in this, in this report. They talked about the geologic setting of the study area, previous work that had been done, what their methodology was for site reconnaissance. They observed the study area, and they talked about the existing transportation corridors, so Redland Road, Livsey Road, Abernathy Creek, Livsey Creek, and Holly Lane. They looked at water well logs, subsurface conditions, and they also reviewed some of the Portland State University literature by Professor Scott Burns and Stuart Maiden. And based on all of that review, they came up with conclusions and recommendations for the city. And here's a few examples of what those were. One was to require a development or lot-specific evaluation and investigation and report by professional engineer, registered in the state of Oregon, who by training, education, and experience is qualified in the practice of geotechnical engineering. They recommended limiting development in areas of greater than twenty-five percent slope, which our code already did, but they, they continue to recommend that. They required further, they recommended further site-specific study for future development. They, this is a specific recommendation that we included in two thousand eight, was we expanded the definitions in the City of Oregon City Municipal Code to reference all of these reports that had been done, and also expand the definitions of what a geologic hazard was. And then they also recommended the maximum boundary for the buffer area, so the fifty-foot from any twenty-five percent slope, and the two-hundred-foot from any geolat, landslide area was a specific recommendation coming out of Park Place that was subsequently adopted in the code. As far as the review process goes, some of the recommendations they made were, have to do with follow-through. When you've got a approved development, they said that we need a specific requirement that the geotechnical engineer of record review final grading, drainage, and foundation plans and specifications, and confirm in writing that they are in conformance with their recommendations provided in their report. They recommended peer review. So for large and complex detailed development on sites in challenging conditions, the city should obtain a peer review from a geotechnical evaluator to review what the applicant turns in. And if our peer reviewer requests specific information, then the applicant would need to respond to that prior to any issuance of a permit. And then any recommendations that come out of that review by the geotechnical engineer needs to be inspected and signed off on once he's satisfied that they've been followed in the field. So they're not just providing a generic set of recommendations that they attach to any report, but they actually go out to the site and confirm that that has been done before the city will sign So here's an example that we provided for the review process. A small shed outside the hazard area. The purple area is the geologic hazard overlay zone. In this case, they would come to the city, and we'd look at it on our map, maybe do a quick drive-by of the property. And if we're satisfied that it's outside of the area of purview, no geologic hazards review would be required in this case.
That was the back of the high school, wasn't it? The old Jackson High School?
Yeah. Yeah, so Jackson Campus is over here. Little more difficult call to make. Rear porch in the hazard area. Here, it's a small addition to a pre-existing house. The city engineer would see how much work is actually being done, do a site visit. The burden would be on the applicant to provide some level of assurance to the city engineer that what they're doing does not violate the standards in the code. They would make an in-house review during the building permitting process, attach any applicable findings from seventeen forty-four to that building permit, and then follow-up with construction inspections from the building division. In this case, what's being proposed is a large addition directly within the hazard area. In this case, they're gonna meet with city engineer to determine the level of review. They would need to, the applicant would hire a professional engineer, prepare an application pursuant to seventeen forty-four oh six oh standards. That's gonna be a type-two land use review process, and be subject to notice and comment. So we would have them post the property. We would write a staff report, and the staff report is then appealable if anybody comments on it. And the city engineer is going to help the planning staff make the findings necessary to show compliance with the overlay zone, followed up by the usual construction inspections, which I talked about. So I didn't really get to the question of how the transportation system plan would tie into the geologic hazard overlay. So I think we can discuss that in a little more detail. But we talked about a lot of the transportation improvements being developer-driven. So if a new road is being constructed by a developer, developer to access their development, that road is gonna be subject to the same level of review. And if we are doing a city capital improvement within the geologic hazard overlay zone, we're gonna reference the code and make findings for it through, through our planning processes. And an example of this, when the Jug Handle project was reviewed, one of the retaining walls that was proposed to be built exceeded the maximum height allowed for a retaining wall in the geologic hazard overlay zone. So in that case, the city engineer came before the planning commission and requested a variance to that. It was basically an engineered wall, and they had limited right-of-way to work within. They couldn't terrace it all the way. That was required in the code, and they got a variance from that.
The design engineer didn't know that prior to-
It was a unique situation because of the limited amount of right-of-way that they had to work within. They were doing the Jug Handle underpass, and so they were really confined.
It's just technicality, isn't it?
Yeah.
What was difficult about that, too, is, you know, a lot of our topography is taken from, from the air. It's not necessarily ground truth. It's kinda like our natural resource overlay district. We've kind of identified stuff off of large maps, but we haven't been able to go out and ground truth anything. So these essentially say, "Hey, there's something here you need to go take a closer look at." And so, you know, especially with the Jug Handle project, was, a lot of that was man-made fill. And so it's that different, you know, but it was still showing up because it was in excess of twenty-five percent slope. So those are just some of the things that we, that we need to deal with. Is it natural? Is it man-made? If it was, was man-made, is there a hazard associated with that? Because, you know, was it done in nineteen fifty, and wasn't compacted, wasn't retained correctly, you know? So a lot does go into trying to determine what do we really need to look at in the geologic hazards code. And so the engineer, city engineer does have some flexibility at saying, "Well, these criteria aren't applicable because maybe they deal with wet soil." Well, we don't have wet soils in this area, so there's no reason to spend time and money reviewing that. And so they do have the ability to tailor what's being provided in the geotechnical review to make sure it's addressing what's actually on-site.
In other words, common sense.
Right. Yeah. But that's certainly, you know, that's another thing that's appealable, though.
Sure. Yeah. And when you're reading the, the code that implements this, it is quite complex. But the procedures that are specified for projects that are just going through the building permit and grading permit process, rather than land use review, it says that the city engineer can review and approve those, provided the standards are met. So the burden is still on the city to show that the standards are met. And that's why when we attach the building permit approval to those levels of projects, we have a set of findings, and the ones that are applicable are written in on the building permit.
So a lot of this stuff is to protect the city's liability?
Well, it's actually to show that the standard has been met, too.
You've done your due diligence.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, you know, the one difference, too, Pete talked a little bit about, you know, two, twenty-five to thirty-five percent, you're allowed two units per acre. Over thirty-five, you're allowed none. So let's say you had a ten-acre parcel, you're coming in for a subdivision. We would essentially go in and say, "Okay, nine acre, eight acres is less than twenty-five percent." You get, you're zoned R-ten, you get four-point-four units per acre. And now you've got one acre that's twenty-five to thirty-five, so you get, you get two units there instead of four-point-four. And then you have another acre that's plus thirty-five, you get zero there. So that comes up to what your net developable acreage is on that ten acres. So at ten units of dead-flat land, at four-point-four, it'd be forty-four units. Just gross, not taking out roads or anything, which we would do, so I'm just using this kinda simple here. But, you know, so you would end up with less houses on that ten acres once you start subtracting out. One difference being, if you have a single lot, and we have a lot of this in Oregon City, Old City, multiple Platts, you have one lot, it's in McLaughlin, let's say, and it's a five-thousand-square-foot lot. It's completely in thirty-five percent-plus slope. Okay? We have to allow one house to be constructed. Now, we can, we can have standards that we have for how it's constructed, but essentially, if you say you cannot construct there, it's essentially a takings. And we need to, we need to, essentially, you're in a position of, of buying the property, because you've taken away all economic value of that property. So that's the one distinction there when we talk about nothing in greater than thirty-five percent are for land use application. So if you're coming in for a subdivision, or a site plan design review, or, or one of those where you're looking at a large development on a large acreage, or if you're, you know, even a two-lot partition, let's say. You know, we could deny the partition, and you only get one house, even though it's mathematically possible to get two, because we're not taking away all your economic availability of that property. So just a little bit of a distinction when it comes to lots that already exist. They get, they're treated a little bit differently than if you're coming in and trying to take a lot and create multiple lots out of it, or a new development on it. You know, and theoretically, it would be the same place if you had a large commercial piece that was completely in there. You know, something would have to be allowed. Now, if you had ten acres and it's all thirty-five, you're not gonna get a ten-acre commercial development on there. You know, it's, then we'd get into, okay, what can you build safely without getting into too much of that, that plus thirty-five area? And it's very, it's very, very rare. It really is. We predominantly deal with it on existing lots of record, in the older neighborhoods.
You know, that, that last graphic that you had on the question page, it's interesting when you look at that. As far as Oregon City is concerned, all the easy land to develop has pretty much already been developed. And what you have left, unless you're redeveloping a piece of property within the city limits, you're looking at, the land that's available now is on the fringes, and it's probably the toughest land available in the area to develop.
And when, in two thousand two, when we were going through and doing the analysis of the urban growth boundary expansion, you know, we looked at areas north, south, and east of the city. And I think that at that time, you know, the decision was made because of the topography on the south side of the city. You know, to go anywhere, to go much further south, you know, you're essentially into pump stations in order to get sanitary out of there and up over the bluff on that south end. So, you know, we kinda drew that line as best as you could, matching topography to property lines, so that we didn't split tax lots, where you'd have one property that may be twenty acres, and half of it's into UGB and half of it's out. That doesn't do anybody any good. So we tried to match the property lines as close as we could to where that break in that, in that bluff is to the south. You know, and essentially, what you're seeing is a lot of, you know, up above Park Place is kind of what's, would be considered, I guess, easy at this point. And that's kinda, that is reflective in the urban and rural reserves designations.
Up around here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this purple boundary is reflective of that two-hundred-foot capture area, as well as the fifty-foot buffer. So, you know, there may be some developable area within that, but it's gonna need to go through review.
Limited.
Yeah.
Well, what it's saying is that, okay, that's within either fifty-foot or two-hundred-foot of either a landslide or slopes over twenty-five percent. It means you need to go in and look at it much closer. Now, once you get in, you know, it could be that it's at ten percent, but because it's within two-hundred feet, it gets, it gets, it needs to go through the review. Just because it's in the buffer doesn't mean it's not developable. It just means we need to take a closer look at it, and that's where we set that boundary. We've identified the hazard itself, and then we added a buffer around it to capture tax lots for further analysis.
So it needs a higher level of scrutiny?
Correct. Yes.
And to defend those buffers and everything, I had a friend who came to me just right in the city in their stupid natural resource overlay, "The creek's always dry. I don't know. It's like, you know, a hundred-and-forty yards away, blah, blah, blah." And then, two years ago, they had an artesian well in their basement. So they literally blew the slab up and filled up their basement. And, you know, it might be dry ten straight years, but it's that eleventh year.
I bet you he changed his tune, huh?
Uh, no, no. The voc, he got a lot louder with it. "Why didn't they warn me about this?" Something, "I remember."
I think there's a little bit of distinction, too. Like, for example, it gets caught in the geologic hazard, something like low groundwater. And it's not necessi, it's categorized as a hazard, but it's more of a construction precaution than a redevelopment precaution. Like, we don't have a high groundwater prohibited zone. People build in close where there's high-water tables. What it really is affecting is your construction standards, you know, making, how you're gonna deal with stormwater, drainage from the homes, infiltration is usually not an option there, obviously, because of the high-water table, how your foundations are constructed, how they're, how the, how your, how the piping, how your rainwater is discharged from the site. So it's not necessi, even though it's in that geologic hazards overlay, it's different than a slope of thirty-five percent, where we're, where we're looking at density reduction, or no, no development allowed versus, okay, it's in a high-water table. You just gotta be careful when you're in there during the construction, or like during wet season construction, you may have to take certain precautions, or the infrastructure for the road that, going in there may, may be different than just your typical high and dry road section. So there are certain things captured in there that have different implications to development. So one thing, we, when we did Rose Road Plan Unit Development, you know, one of the things continuously brought up is, well, it's in a high groundwater table. It's in a high groundwater table. And we're trying to explain that, yes, we know, and that affects the construction of the home, the foundations, how those are constructed, how those are set, how the footings are done.
How drainage-
It has nothing to do with how many houses you can put on the property.
'Cause it's, the Rose Road is flat as a board.
Which makes all that water spread out during an event.
It's almost like it used to be a farm or something.
Tony, I think we're all kind of surprised to see what's happening to our neighbor to the south with all these sinkholes and sloughing away of-
California.
-neighborhoods, for golly sakes. And what is it, twenty-five-unit subdivision is gonna be condemned if it doesn't stop? And do we have any, anything to measure that, or is that just nature's way? I don't know if you call it a sinkhole or what, but it's, you know, California's sliding into-
Well-
It's like a earth creek. It's down there.
I think a lot of what we're dealing with, you know, is obviously predominantly Newell, Newell Creek Apartments, and there's continuing, you know, obviously, there's been, you know, I believe two units were, were removed from that property. from that property. And then there's continuous monitoring of that situation on that hillside there.
That really does affect the public safety there, that's.
It, yes, it definitely does. When you're, when you're talking a dead end access, one way in, one way out, you know, fire life safety access, yeah, that's, goes to connectivity, why it's important to provide multiple routes in and out of there. But in terms of a predictability factor, we don't, we don't have one. What we, what we can do is say, okay, where do we know it's happened in the past? Where do we have evidence of it? Where can we make these best assumptions about where we should take more precautions and then put that buffer around it to make sure we understand what's going in before we go in there and build?
Can I ask a question about the map? Because I can't see it here. I just needed to ask, Pete, up there around Park Place, now way up, up there underneath that's, right there, are those two little areas?
Here?
Over here, to the right, right below the square you have there, right there, are those two purple areas? Go to the right just a little bit.
Those two little circles?
Oh, these guys?
Are those slight areas?
Uh, let's see, those are.
I couldn't tell from here.
Those are most likely slope buffer, you know, because this layer actually goes out beyond the UGB here, so.
And those two little spots are, if you go to the left just a little bit, there's two little spots there in that trail view area. Are those also?
Well, I think.
You got to remember, this is shut from a plane.
Yeah, there may be some existing steep structures that the LiDAR data, because that LiDAR is a satellite that shines down through the foliage and bounces off the ground.
I just wondered.
And it picks up retaining walls even, so.
Because a lot, a lot of that subdivision put in that huge retaining wall around the exterior of it and we picked those up.
Because I almost bought the property right where that first purple one is and I walked in the back and it was so steep down there. No, I don't want that.
I'll bet you a lot of that is, and that's, and that was actually, that syntax development precipitated our first significant changes to the geologic hazards code. Because what they essentially did was, they were, it was on a gentle sloping hill away, coming south from Holcomb. And in order to save money in terms of the infrastructure that they put in, it was cheaper to put up, you know, twelve, fifteen foot rock walls around the perimeter and backfill everything so it was relatively flat. So you had flat lots instead of yards on a slope in the back. So what our LiDAR picks up are those retaining walls. And so that's another example of something where we need to go ground truth it and that it's, it's not really a hazard, but it got, it got picked up when the satellite went by.
Yeah, so there, there may be engineered structures that it's kind of showing as geologic hazards, but at least they're there on the map and you can quickly go and check.
I know before I even knew you guys, before I knew anything about city, I know I bought the one lot that had a huge rock wall, big ones where bears could crawl in between. And I had to have the state come out and inspect it because, and that was again, before I knew anything about the city or slopes or anything. But they were concerned about it enough that they had the syntax come in and fill in dirt below the base of it because, and they're still going, oh, you're protected because you brought it up when you first bought the home. But it's interesting because I noticed those two spots. Thanks for your information.
Sure.
And to answer your question.
So, Tony, you have anything else to present to us? No, this is everything I have. Hopefully, I've answered any questions you have. Any other questions for Tony? Or Pete? Thank you.
More technology are you going to throw at us, Tony?
How much you want?
How much you willing to pay for?
He wants to share the smart. When you say the satellite flew over, is that at your command, was it? Did you just dial nine one one?
The city actually owns the LiDAR data and I think they paid for the data from the service that did the flight.
Is that right?
So, yeah. But that's as much as I can tell you. David Knoll is our, is the person that knows the most about that, so.
Thank you, Pete.
Sure.
So the next item on our agenda is PC thirteen dash zero four five ancillary uses discussion.
So.
Tony, are you giving us a rare presentation? Nice, nice.
So what we're, what we're looking at. So as we've seen more and more investment in downtown and mixed use corridor zone, for example, along Seventh Avenue, what we're, what we're running into is we've identified multiple permitted uses, conditional uses, prohibited uses. And then obviously, there are sometimes there's misses, there's uses that we miss. We don't, they're not identified in any of those categories. And then the question is, what do we do with these things? And, and so what we're, what we're talking about was either amending the code or creating a policy to kind of, and have these discussions with, with the planning commission as we've thought about it and we've identified this because it continues to come up. And an example of this would be, I want to bring in, I want to bring in a brewery in downtown. And obviously, the restaurant, retail, bar component of that outright permitted, not a problem at all. But they also want to manufacture their beer on site. And manufacturing isn't addressed. It's not allowed, it's not conditional, it's not prohibited, it's silent. And so then the question is, well, I really, really want to manufacture beer, but I realize I have to do retail. So how much retail do I have to do for me to be considered permitted? And is it, you know, ten percent of the square footage is retail? And does that retail actually have to be open all the time or can it be open once a week or twice? You know, and so we get put in these positions as staff where I don't really have a good answer because we've never really had the discussion to really set the policy or to amend the code to address it.
Let me ask you a question. Is this free beer or a beer you have to pay for?
It is, it's retail use.
Retail, okay, yeah.
If it was free, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So, so for example, Singer Hill, you know, they have their, their restaurant and their deli and they have art studio frame, you know, permitted, permitted. Two uses going on in the same building, not a problem whatsoever. The code addresses it, not a big deal. The joinery, obviously, they, they have a retail component to them, but they also manufacture what they sell on the site. And so we're not really clear, how do we, how do we address this? How do we set some type of a standard? What happens if they're bringing in multiple truckloads? For example, if you did have a brewery, you know, what is that impact on downtown or on the mixed use corridor? Can it be accommodated safely? Should we be reviewing it? And if so, is there a threshold that we should be reviewing that at? You know, Rogales up in northwest Portland is a good example of, you know, a lot, a lot of the, the questions that we're getting, you know, how can we, how can we do something? Or if we want to do this, where can we do it? You know, it's, you can do it in industrial, but, because you can have a small retail component, but is that really where we want this type of a use? Or is that the appropriate spot? And we say, yep, you know, it's, it's manufacturing and you're allowed up to, off the top of my head, I think about ten percent retail, that's where you belong. But, you know, this is an example of a very good use that would probably be compatible in a mixed use downtown or a mixed use commercial zone.
Is there anything in the code, the planning process that would give the planning commission the authority to make that decision?
I think it's, I think it's talking about, there's a couple of ways we can address it. One is you change the code. And we, we bring forward a legislative amendment and we clarify what we need and we adopt, we make a recommendation to the city commission, they adopt it via ordinance and it becomes code and we have clarity. Can also do it through a policy of, of setting how we're going to interpret our code.
Who's going to interpret it, you or?
Well, that's, that's where we set the policy, yeah. So that's why we're having this discussion, you know, trying to determine what's the best route to move forward and trying to address some of these. They're not really gray, they're just not very, they're, they're not clear as to how do we want to proceed with these? You know, do we set thresholds? And if you can't meet the threshold, does it go to the planning commission for a decision? So I think it's just, we're, we're seeing more and more of this and we're trying to be a little bit proactive here to come up with a, with an answer that, that we can be consistent and say, look, we've, we've had this discussion, here's what the policy is or here's what the code says. Obviously, you know, having it codified is, 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 you know, kind of the gold standard, you know. But at the same, you know, and that would probably be the best route to go. You know, depending on how, how much of a change we want to make or how, how big of a leap are we taking in terms of the discretion that, that we're trying to provide in interpreting our code as to what's used, what's an ancillary use to a permitted use and whatnot.
What's the frequency that you're looking at this kind of a situations being proposed to you?
You know, it's becoming, it's becoming more and more as folks try and really utilize those buildings. You know, a lot of our buildings downtown are big. When you look at the square footage of them and realistically, you know, you're not going to fill that whole space as, as a retail use or, you know, or an office use or.
Do we have any definitions in the glossary or just definitions in the code for fabrication and processing, manufacturing that would separate these so that they wouldn't get all spaghettied up and you could make a quicker decision?
I think that's, that's why we're.
We don't have a definition of, of retail in the code. I think some of those we do, but some of the, some of them we don't. And there's definitely some clarification there that's needed in the definition.
Like, we say, in the, in the permitted uses, retail trade, including gift shops, bakeries, delis, florists, pharmacies, specialty stores, and any other use permitted in the neighborhood, historic or limited commercial district that have a, some size limitation, sixty thousand square feet. So, you know, we say bakeries are a retail use. So does that mean?
Friends can move in and.
Does that mean baking, as long as you're selling something from the site is, is fine? You could take a sixty thousand square foot building and have a two thousand square foot retail in the front and the remaining is all the baking and, and sending that out? Or is that more like, is that wholesaling, which is prohibited? When does it become wholesaling? Versus, do you have to sell everything on site? Or can you, can you, can you brew beer and sell some of it on site and ship the others to the store? And so this is where we've just, there's not enough clarity to say, what's the threshold when it becomes a permitted use versus a prohibited use?
Do you know how other cities are managing such things?
Well, some cities have provisions for this and we can do some more research and see what they're at. I think, and other cities have a whole other tool, which I guess they call a form based code, which is not what I'm necessarily advocating at this point. But they're basically saying, as long as a building looks a certain way, is built a certain way, you can do whatever you want. But that brings up the other question, which is, are there uses that we are potentially displacing that through this policy that we really want to see downtown? Which I think is an important question.
Could you? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you give us the standards if you did a little?
Yeah, and I think I was handing out a policy on ancillary and related uses. And what we kind of, and this was just a first, you know, an initial review, trying to come up with, you know, how could we, here, here's an option that we could address these with. And what it essentially says is, the ancillary use does not have to be identified as a permitted use within the district provided the use complies with the standards identified below. A use that is listed as prohibited is, is not allowed to be an ancillary use. Example, outdoor storage or motor vehicle services, which does, you know, in the outdoor storage component raises another issue of what, you know, if you're, let's just say, going back to a brewery and you're storing some of your raw material outside, is that outdoor storage? Or is outdoor storage more characterized as, I have a fenced in yard, you can come pay me a monthly rent to store my stuff there, right? And so this is where we get into some of these gray areas where, yeah, you can do it here. In our current policy and our current interpretation of the code is, but you got to get everything in a building. You can't store your raw material outside or you can't store your product outside. It needs to be inside the building. And why that's important is because, you know, once you allow one, you got to allow the others regardless of what it is. A use that is listed as conditional must be approved through the city's adopted conditional use permit process. So even if it's, even if you're a permitted use and you want to do this ancillary use, if it's identified as conditional, you got to go through a conditional use process. This is addressing uses that we haven't, we haven't written down as permitted, prohibited, or conditional. If it's prohibited, it's, it can't be an ancillary use in the zone. It's not even an option. So this is, this is trying to provide a little bit of clarity or setting up a process to determine if an ancillary use to a permitted use is acceptable or not. And what we would say is, a use may be considered an ancillary use and may receive a business license if it's located on the same lot as the primary use and is directly associated with it. So you couldn't be, you know, selling candles in the front and, and making cars in the back. You know, they need, you can make your candles in the back and sell them up front. They need to be compatible with what you're doing on the site. It's separated from the, for permitted use by a wall or the permanent barrier. Essentially, you're setting up two distinct areas in the building where you would have more of the manufacturer putting it together area versus where your permitted use is, whether that be restaurant, retail, sales in another section of the building.
And I guess to use some of the, like the bakery and brewing thing, that wall could be a glass wall.
Certainly. It just needs separation for safety and fire and life, yeah. The primary entrance of the building serves solely the permitted use. The area in square feet devoted to permitted use is larger than the area devoted to the use that is not listed in the zone. So this gets to, you know, fifty-one percent needs to be dedicated to the permitted use, forty-nine to the accessory use in order to be considered accessory. We just put that in there because we were, you know, ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty-five percent, fifty percent. You know, I think that's a discussion we can have about what's really appropriate and what do you, what, what it comes down to is what the impact of the accessory use is going to be relative to the permitted use on the site.
Well, and I guess to get back to the primary entrance question. So, excuse me, again, just picking on bakeries and breweries because, hey, you got a picture in front of me, so it's got my mind there. But, so I wanted to come and do business with Acme Baking Company. Do I have to walk through the restaurant to get to the offices? Or can I go to the service entrance and the loading dock and get to the offices?
Good question.
Because I want to supply flour and, you know, there's.
And I think that there's ways to do that. I mean, multiple businesses are set up with a public entrance and an employee private entrance, you know, whether it be by appointment only or for sales calls or, or whatnot. I think that it's just differentiating where the public can get access to in a building.
Right.
And that, you know, if we're looking at mixed use downtown where we're trying to focus on the streetscape, pedestrian access, pedestrian walkability.
Yeah.
You want the retail there where you have that streetscape in that entrance. You don't want, you know.
A truckload of flour backing down Main Street.
And we've got the retail stuck in the back off an alley.
Yeah, well, you're saying the primary entrance, which would imply that's where the public goes to do business. But there can be a secondary entrance for the business office, for the manufacturing operations and that type of thing.
I think that's very common. I mean, we, we have a primary door right here and we have a secondary door right here that's accessed only by staff in this building right here.
And one on that side.
That side as well, yes. The proposed ancillary use is not prohibited use in the zone and complies with the municipal code standards identified for noise, heat, glare, exhaust, et cetera. So kind of your common nuisance that you would see, making sure that it's compatible. This one, this one's a little bit difficult in terms, you know, the smell coming from a brewery, is that appropriate in downtown? So it's, it's a little bit vague, but it's what we have now in our code.
What concerns me a little bit is large trucks. That, you know, that large delivery truck and that, that's a, that would, especially downtown Oregon City.
Except, you know, I've seen semis going down railroad avenues so they can go up the bridge. I mean, and that's basically, it's Main Street, Railroad and McLaughlin, those are the, the three roads downtown. And I've seen semis on all of them, all, all the way down the length of railroad.
Then we wrote, okay, if the proposal does not comply with the above five criteria, the community development director may consider the following in order to determine if it. the community development director may consider the following in order to determine if it can be approved as an ancillary use. Hours of operation of the proposed primary and ancillary uses, the size of the primary use in relation to the ancillary use. I mean, there, we could set a hard percentage, but there may be, there may be times when it's appropriate. Maybe it's a very large building and, you know, you've got more retail and restaurants than you need, you know, but it's a very large building. So could you, could you make a finding that it is appropriate to have a larger component?
What about hours of operation?
Yep, hours of, yep, hours of operation is something that we could, could consider if it can't meet those top five.
We're talking about encouraging residential mixed use downtown Oregon City. We gotta think about those people that want to go to bed at ten o'clock at night. And the Dalai Lama, my goodness, he gets up at three in the morning. I mean, you know.
Well, one of the things I remember so joyously at U of O is being in the dorms right next door to the Friends Bakery and three AM when the trucks show up and the shelves start rattling and, you know, and you had to have the windows open because there was no AC. Everybody woke up at three.
Got a good education on it, didn't you?
No, I went to Oregon State. I was too smart.
Location and prominence, the entrance to the primary use, the character of both the building exterior and the interior space, proportion of revenue that results from each use, whether the programming of space is consistent with the intent of the zone. Also for uses which result in delivery from trucks with three or more axles more than three times per day, a plan for site traffic circulation, safety, loading and unloading is required. So we're trying to address some of those transportation issues, you know, trying to set up, at least identifying paths that folks who want to do these type of uses can go if we're, if we're something we want to entertain.
Well, one thing that comes to mind to me, and I think I mentioned this to you last year, after I took a trip up to Vancouver, BC, there's a place there called Granville Island and there's a mixture of different businesses. And a lot of them, they'll have the retail component and then they're doing some sort of manufacturing in the back and they're manufacturing everything from glass to...
Artist community.
Frames for, you know, artwork and just a whole litany of different things. And it's exactly what you're talking about where they have a retail component, but some of it's actually demonstration places where they, they show you how they make the thing. And the other thing that comes to mind is the Applet and Cotlet. Place up in Cashmere, that they've got the retail store, but then there's, as Damon was talking about, they've got the glass wall, you can stand there and watch them manufacturing the product right there in front of you.
Cheese factory the same way.
You really opened up a can of worms because, you know, expand that. If you expand that argument, you're extended. You know, we're really looking at what do we really want downtown Oregon City to be? And that's a, that's a pretty big question.
Right, and it's, and it's trying to build on, you know, we've, we've got the adopted mixed use downtown zone and we kind of have the policy statement that says what we're trying to accomplish. If we can accomplish that, you know, are we okay with allow, you know, allowing ancillary uses that we haven't conditionally or prohibited? You know, or do we want to make them conditional uses? Or do we want to prohibit them for that matter? Maybe we've, maybe we think it's completely inappropriate and we should clarify what our position is. But we, well, we really do run into just the more, and it's not just brewery or bakery, it's, you know, I, I got my, I do signs, I do sign installation. So I've got my office there, I've got a retail component and we make the signs in the back and then I take my trucks out and I go hang them. What, are we calling that retail office and, okay, you can make your signs in the back and we're just gonna... We just don't have, we just don't know what to call it or what to do with it or how much of that's appropriate? Or how much of this building can you use? Or we've had medical, medical supply, you know, we're, we're making, we're, here's our, it's our headquarters. We've got a walk-in component to it, but in the back, you know, we are, we're bringing it in, we're putting the medical supply together and, and we're selling it not only out of our, front of our store, but we're shipping it out with UPS every day. You know, and is that, is that appropriate?
Or a forest that has a greenhouse in the back to keep the orchids alive or grow them?
The thing that strikes me about this whole concept, especially in the downtown area where you say that we've got large buildings that are hard to fill up with small retail outlets is that it opens up the opportunity to maximize the use of those buildings and add vitality to the neighborhood where there's not necessarily as much activity.
Well, I guess my other thing is, you haven't, you haven't talked about it here, but, you know, what about, you know, like when you talk about square footage, you know, ratios and all that, are we just talking about the ground floor? Because like a brewery, they might have two-story things where they want to take half of the second story out so they can have their, their containers. And then the third story is residential, the second story is their office and the first is manufacturing and sales, you know, retail.
And it does, it does also, you know, the whole inside versus the outside. I mean, right now, just because of the inquiries we see for outdoor storage, I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want to open up that. I think that if you, if we're gonna make, if we're gonna open this up, it needs to be contained within a building.
I'm telling you, you put a brewery like they have on Burnside and some of those things and that, and you're gonna put people on the streets in downtown Oregon City, you really will. I mean, people will just come here and grow.
And I think it's just a matter of how do you get there? Because, you know, and it's one thing if it's, you know, okay, it's one thing if you're, if you're, the retail component's easy and locating their office there is easy. It's what do you do? Because there is an impact associated with such an intense use like that, both on the water and the storm. And, or in that case, it's probably going sanitary, not stormwater, it's going to sanitary. Now, those are, those are big users and how do you make sure that we're adequately sizing to accommodate that? But also, are we okay with, you know, introducing more of a manufacturing component into the downtown that is being sold wholesale, even though we, you know, in mixed use corridor, we've outright, we've prohibited it?
Well, you know, I guess the thing I'd point to, and unfortunately they're not in business anymore, but it's Hopps Upholstery. They're exactly that business where they had, you walked in three steps past the door to a counter and that you were done. You know, with the retail portion and the rest was all the work they, it was the workshop in the back, which, you know, and that's, that's Oregon City eighteen eighty. I mean, that's the way it was, the, you know, and I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I, I agree with you about the outdoor storage, particularly when we're also having the discussion about parking, because the only way they can get outdoor storage is to take away parking downtown. And so, so I completely concur with that. But, you know, a twenty-five seventy-five ratio of retail to manufacturing, I think, isn't an unreasonable expectation. Talking about a brewery, you know, or bakery, either one of those, they don't need a lot of stuff, of space in order to be productive. You know, I joked about the florist with this greenhouse, that's, that's an absolutely reasonable thing if they're gonna be, you know, trying to, winter and you're trying to get orchids in Oregon. You need a place to keep them alive and safe, so I think you're going the right way.
Yeah, and, and I think that if you, if you were to consider the potential of the Blue Heron property, you know, I mean, right, right now, we're just talking about downtown, but that Blue Heron property would be an ideal application for this kind of concept where you could have a mixture of retail office, manufacturing and residential all occupying that same zone.
It's kind of taken that a little bit of a leap from traditional segregation of uses. You know, the, it's always been, you know, manufacturing can't be co-existent with residential or office or retail. And I think that we've seen the manufacturing change quite a bit from what I think it traditionally was. And there are probably certain types of manufacturing that are completely compatible in some of these areas. And there are others that wouldn't be and I completely, and, you know, and that gets into another can of worms, you know. How do we, you know, kind of gotta rely on the noise, heat and glare one, you know?
Well, and it, but I think, like I was saying, in eighteen eighty, in eighteen sixties, manufacturing was a small thing. Then we went into manufacturing as big, smelly, loud things puffing out black smoke. And now, at least in most of the United States, manufacturing has become small, quiet, computer-driven machines that pump out stuff and you need room to snap it all together. So we've kind of come back to a craftsmanship style of manufacturing.
Exactly. I go along with what Damon's saying that I think probably traditionally, most furniture stores built furniture in the back room and had a showroom in front. And that, that's probably more typical of that era that the business was manufacturing or building their own product that they were selling in the showroom.
I guess, you know, and it's kind of splitting hairs here a little bit, you know, like for, for, in mixed use downtown, you know, retail, like I said, retail restaurants, fine. A conditional use there is distributing, wholesaling and warehousing. So I'm making, I'm making my product and I'm selling it at my retail establishment and I'm also sending it out. Is that, you know, fifty percent is wholesa, I mean, you know, or if you send it out the door, it's wholesaling, therefore you're a conditional use?
Yeah.
You know, and is that, is that what we want? And, and, you know, if it's not, we should probably try and address that a little bit.
There is a tobacco store down next to the depot barber shop. And I went in there the other day and here's a guy sitting there smoking his pipe, reading his book. And I said, well, how's business? And he says, well, it's great.
Online.
He does online worldwide, out over the back room. So things are changing.
And it's like, and if you're selling it to me, that's retail.
Yeah.
Right? If you're selling it to...
But he's selling it online.
Costco, that's wholesaling.
Yeah.
Right? And so I'm just, I'm wondering if we've got too fine in our definitions.
Well, Tony, what about the fire marshal's aspect of it? He's gonna take a...
Oh, yeah. I mean, building code would all be applicable, fire code would all be applicable. I think it's just saying if you, if you can do it, you know, you're gonna have to comply with all the state standards and whatnot. But, you know, is it...
Okay, go ahead. Do you think that the real estate market is there for, what we're talking about here is a matter of degree? That's, that's really a matter of degree. Do you think that the real estate market would come into downtown Oregon City and just do something completely out of character? Like, like Damon said, you know, ship the, the buns and the bread at three o'clock in the morning out the back door when they've got a retail entrance off the main street?
It's certainly a possibility, you know.
I just wondered how probable it is.
You're gonna need a lot bigger building to produce breads and bakery.
The Bushes furniture building is perfect for something like that.
Really? There's that much...
It's three stories. It's like...
But, you know, and this is, this is kind of that collision of wanting to expand our downtown from kind of the eight to five to more of a, you know, essentially a twenty-four hour city, you know, in terms of that activity. And so you, you know, it's just, it's thoughtfully thinking out these potential conflicts. Because right now, you know, we've, we've pretty much put it, you know, there's some of these things we, we, we can't find a way to approve under our existing code. And, and so that's, for some, that's, that might be a good thing. But I think it's just having the discussion because we're starting to get that pressure in those inquiries.
What about hours of operation limitations there? You can't be working twenty-four hours a day, you know.
Or just noise ordinances.
Yeah.
Well, they, they...
That would all be addressed later.
They're, they're hard, though. The noise ordinance is really hard and anything nuisance driven. While we have it on the book, it's a really tough one to enforce. We don't have a decibel level at the property line.
Well, the other thing too is you've got to protect that vision that you have for this mixed use downtown by allowing it to happen without something coming in and being non-conforming, but allowable. You know what I mean?
Right. And it's more than, and it's like, okay, so you have this opportunity for jobs. You know, this, this could be a jobs generator, you know, which goes into, you know, that's, that's one of the things we need, you know, employment, housing, retail, you know, in order to do it all in, in that area. And so, like I said, I think it's, I'm just trying to get some initial feedback and concerns and if there's any interest in us trying to work on this a little bit more and flesh it out.
I think there is, because I think the implications are...
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, that's primarily what this is, just elementary.
This is just our first kind of start the discussion, realizing more work needs to go into it, but just bringing forward, you know, that we are getting these questions and there's not a good way to answer it. You know, if someone could, somebody comes in and we've had this, well, if I do fifteen percent retail that's open three days a week and I manufacture beer in the back, which is what I primarily want to do, is that acceptable? You know, is three days a week being open three or four hours a day acceptable, you know? I didn't think it was, you know, but I didn't really have code that I could say yea or nay. So it kind of fell back to, well, you're manufacturing and you're wholesaling it, which isn't allowed. Yeah. And is that, I guess, you know, is that something we want?
So with the input, sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say, with the input that we've gotten, given you, then are you gonna take it back and make these a little bit more specific or expand on this?
I guess I, I'm hearing consensus that this is something we'd like to discuss further and let us do a little work on it and try and come back and, and think about the concerns, because it is a little bit of a shift.
Yeah.
You know, we're essentially opening up the uses a little bit more than what we've had them at right now.
And then, yeah, one question I have, Tony, maybe is, you know, we deal a lot with existing buildings versus new buildings as well and do we want a policy that deals with new structures as opposed to existing structures? Or would this policy apply to both?
I think you could probably open it up across the board.
Yeah. Yeah, because especially in the downtown area, any construction, we want to be consistent with what's already in existence. So that does put some constraints on it.
But, you know, and it's, it's the whole, you know, retail's retail, retail regardless of what you're selling. Right? We can't say...
If it's legal.
If it's legal, it can be sold. And it's the same, it's the same thing with this. And so I think it's just trying to be thoughtful to make sure we don't get into a situation where, you know, something comes in that's completely incompatible with the downtown, but we've already, well, we've opened the door. Well, you say right here, I can manufacture as long as I've got X percent dedicated to retail and I can manufacture whatever I want. And so it's trying to address that, you know, it's planning for the worst case, which unfortunately is what we do quite a bit of.
Well, you get a guy that buys a five hundred thousand dollar condominium downtown Oregon City because we're open for business and somebody says, oh, ho, let's go do it. So I buy my five hundred thousand dollar condominium and all of a sudden I find out that the street level activity down there doesn't allow me, you know, the peace of living in that area. There's too much activity, too much noise, smells, traffic, this and that, you know, it's just, it's just a bad fit.
That's called due diligence.
Well, but I mean, we talk about furniture. Yeah, you talk about furniture manufacturing, I mean, the saws and the routers, they go through buildings. Those two noises penetrate, so, you know, would it be a situation of, you know, construction can only have, because you can assemble at two in the morning?
We could certainly set hours.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, you could...
It's just an enforcement issue.
You could assemble the furniture at two in the morning with the graveyard shift. You just can't, you know, cut the parts except during normal working hours or whatever. Those are all things that are good ideas, though, I think.
Yeah, you've, you've identified noise, heat, glare and other things in here.
I think if that was something, we would certainly want to maybe expand on that because like I said, it's kind of, it's in the nuisance code and, you know, it's like, okay, your air quality meets DEQ standards. I mean, that's kind of the standard because we don't have our own, you know, we don't have a decibel level requirement. So it may be something that we want to think about, you know, in hours of operation or something like that.
Or maybe make, you know, an ancillary uses restrictions tighter, you know, no noise above, you know, ambient noise outside of the building beyond ten PM, you know, and that means no ambient noise. You can't have your stereo on, you can't, you know, if that's what you want to do. Well, there are, there are already existing uses.
So where do you want to go with this?
Well, I think I was just trying to hear if they're trying to get, you know, some of the good concerns about compatibility, but then, you know, if this was something that it sounded like maybe we wanted us to take a little bit more look at and try and refine it a little bit and come back and have another discussion. try and refine it a little bit, and come back and have another discussion about that.
I really think you oughta run this by a fire marshal. I really think he could be a help to you, I really do, cause those guys, they deal with some pretty complicated issues, they really do.
So, do you wanna maybe come back and, and give us an opportunity to have some input in this, when you've got it tuned up a little bit?
I think what we'll do is we'll kinda build off of what we've prepared here, and kind of maybe see if we can look at some other case study, or, or just try to flush it out a little bit more to what the code or the policy might look like.
Sounds great. Okay, what else do we have? Community Director Communications.
Um, let's see, we, uh...
We'll let you play that part, too.
I'm sorry?
We'll let you play that part, too.
You're good. Um, no, I'll make it, I'll make it quick. We, uh, we did the interviews for the, um, Willamette Falls Legacy Project, we had fourteen applications for that, we narrowed it down during the written review to, to eight, we had a fifteen-person review committee review all those written proposals, and then we had a fifteen-person, the same fifteen people sit in on two days of interviews, we interviewed eight, uh, firms, it was unanimous recommendation to myself and the trustee of Walker Macy, and so we're negotiating a, a contract in scope of work with them, that will then be brought forward to the city commission for their final approval, hopefully we're shooting for June fifteenth, um, to have that contract, uh, scope finalized, and approved, and hopefully approved by the, by the commission.
The review team consisted of who, Tony?
We had two from the city, two from metro, uh, two from, uh, the state of Oregon, actually only one from the state of Oregon, they were offered two spots, um, two from Clackamas County, um, the trustee was invited, he didn't participate, but he was informed and saw the applications.
One through CIC.
We had a member from the Planning Commission, Citizen Involvement Committee, um, representative from down in the main street area, um, environmental river representative, representative from the Port of Portland, um...
From Willamette Falls Heritage.
Yeah, Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, um, I think I might be missing one.
For the record.
Oh, Historic Preservation League of Oregon.
For the record, I just wanna say, I, I, I just don't think there could be any much more improvement for citizen participation and, and technical participation than that review board that, that he just mentioned. I mean, how do you get any better than that?
Uh, you go door to door and force everybody to sit through a twenty-minute PowerPoint.
It was, it was, it was very, it was very, it was very interesting process, cause we went through and did the written, and Walker Macy scored the highest, but there was kind of a little bunch in the middle, and we're like, well, how do we break this up? And so then we identified, okay, who received a first or a second place vote, and we put that on a spreadsheet, and it was very clear, made a clear break then. And then, you know, just so you don't think it was a bunch of, a group thought, that, you know, it was amazing with that diverse stakeholder review committee, that every person recommended Walker Macy as their number one choice after they saw the presentations, and, um, they interviewed on the second day, and, you know, it was interesting, as we're going through the interviews on the first day, and, you know, the first four or five people would be, would be there like, "Oh, you know, I think they did a great job," and then all, you know, one person would come out and say, "Well, now wait a minute, this, this and that," I mean, so it was a very thoughtful and diligent, um, exercise, and I really do wanna thank everyone who participated in that, because they put many, many hours into reviewing that information, and really brought back great feedback, and it made the process go very, very well.
Was there something specific about them that made them stand out so strongly?
You know, they just, they, they just put together a, a really good presentation, they put together a very strong team, um, they really embraced, you know, the four values that we've been moving forward, and just the opportunity of the site really came across in their presentation of the opportunity this is, how special this site is to multiple, multiple stakeholders, and how that, you know, that is a strength that you could build on to move this project.
Any environmental engineers, in case we run into something that we didn't anticipate?
Um, we don't, we did a phase two over the summer environmental, we think we have a pretty good handle on that, um, so, we, we didn't include that in the scope at this point, it, it came in as very manageable.
They addressed the seals?
They did not address the seals, no.
Uh, for what it's worth, Denise gave me a note that if there is an opportunity in the future to be involved in the Blue Heron master plan process, that she would love to do that, so, and, and I, I think that's, uh, you know, if, if we, any of us have an opportunity to, to be involved in some aspect of that master plan process, I think it'd be great.
Just try to keep us away.
Away.
Just try to keep us...
Away, keep us, oh, away, I was gonna say, yeah, um, right, and so that's what we're working on right now with the scope, is, you know, a, a, a large part of this grant money was for public participation and public involvement and outreach, and obviously, you know, Planning Commission is one of those stakeholders.
No, this, this isn't any project, this has got historical significance to it, historical. What this city does will last for the next hundred years on that site down there.
So, that's really the main focus of our energy, you know, daily, you know, daily projects, um, you know, we are seeing a little bit of a pickup in terms of some development activity on a very small, kinda slow scale coming back, um, but, uh...
Hillen type stuff?
Yeah, a lot of smaller stuff, yep.
Good, all right.
Well, I'll mention the South End Concept Plan.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, the project status right now is, we had an open house on April thirteenth, where we showed three alternative concepts to the public, and we got pretty good feedback and representation at that meeting, and we're working on an alternative, a preferred alternative, or at least a, a concept based on the feedback that we got off those three, um, which will be unveiled and showed to the public on June first at McLaughlin Elementary School, um, and we'll see what kinda comments we get, um, and then, based on that, we'll have a final presentation for a preferred alternative before we actually start coming, coming before you with, uh, planning, you know, a hearing situation and implementation, so, um, it's, there are gonna be some unique challenges for the area based on the desire for maintaining rural character, juxtaposed with the, the requirement to meet a certain density and residential component for that area, and a desire for all the improvements that urbanization brings while keeping it open feeling. So there's some design and implementation challenges that we're starting to see as we move from planning to preferred alternatives to implementation, and I think it'll be good to see how the team comes up with those, and how we implement them in our code, but...
Did you get much feedback off your web survey?
This time around, so we had the second online survey, uh, we had about fifty comments this time, and I think we, that, we had about, I wanna say two hundred and fifty comments the first round, um, so, um, not as many as we would have liked, uh, but, um, at the same time, I think people really wanna see what comes out of this process now, and so June first, we, we'll have the postcards in the mail, if, they should be in the mail right now, where we're doing the mailouts, um, to all three budding neighborhood associations and outside the urban growth boundary as well, so, hopefully we'll get a good turnout on June first, and see what kinda feedback we get.
Where will that be?
Pardon?
Where will that be?
Uh, McLaughlin Elementary School, so, at, uh, we're doing one P.M., yeah.
And for what it's worth, I think we really need to compliment the school district on making McLaughlin so available.
Yeah, Ginger Redlinger's been amazing to work with, she's just opened up that school for us for this process, so, it's been nice, yeah.
That's great.
Nope, we closed.
All right, that's good, because I'm gonna be on vacation, starting tomorrow.
Good, all right, are you adjourned?
We are adjourned.
Thanks.
I do have a question for you.